It's already November eighteenth and it's at four o'clock. And so I'm gonna call this Lacey City Council meeting to order. And let's get started with a pledge of allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America. To the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Um, we do have a an agenda and consent agenda items before us. Can I get a motion to approve?
Move to approve the agenda and consent agenda?
Second.
Second.
It's been moved in second. Is there any discussion? Seeing none, all in favor of that motion signify by saying aye.
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 Is there anyone opposed? Then the motion carries and we have approved agenda and consent agenda items. And uh first up after that is our public recognitions and presentations. We do have a report out from the Lacey Youth Council.
Oh, okay.
Is the is the deputy mayor here to give the youth council to give the report?
She is here.
Then I'll turn it over to the deputy mayor of the youth council. You could um unmute yourself and turn on your video. Like you give your report.
Sorry, hold on. Excuse me, how it's going? Okay. Then go. There. Good evening, uh, uh, major in city council. Uh, my name is Alejandro Hernandez and I am the deputy mayor of the um Lacey Youth Council. Um, I am very happy um to be here and I am here to update you. Um, since September, we have learned about leadership, um, community planning and infrastructure. Uh, we have also learned a lot of a lot about job politics, uh, sorry, a lot of our jobs in public service. Uh, in uh, we would like to share uh what we learned with the community. So we will still planning um how to do that in our social media. Uh, we're also very proud of our youth representative um to the community um to the to the commu- to the commission on equity, Alanis Blackbrough. She's doing amazing job on the uh representing our youth um council. Please um Tuesday on the engagement session in the uh commissioning equity. Um, she will be again seeing um in next session on Saturday. Um, we're also currently working um in the spring on having a youth summit. And we're gonna invite businesses, um local groups, and we're gonna talk about job opportunities and volunteers um on how we can also involve our youth in like have their voices being heard doing that summit.
Is that the interview report? Okay, well, thank you so much and you're I know you're doing a great job and keep up the great work around the youth council. We appreciate all you're doing for the city of Lacey.
Thank you. Have a good night, everybody.
Thank you, you too.
Thank you.
So next up on our agenda is uh public comments on on items not on agenda. We didn't receive any um written public comments, but we did have a couple people sign up uh to give verbal public comments. And if we can let the first person in uh who signed up is Mark. In the audience. There he is. Mark, if you could unmute yourself and uh turn on your video and let us know what city you're from and keep your comments about three minutes.
Thank you very much, uh, Mayor Andy and disgruntled member of the Lacey City Council member. It's been a while since I addressed this uh group. Uh, but my name is Mark Kibaishi. I do currently reside on seven seven two six Cantorwood Drive, Southeast Olympia. It's outside of the our city limit, but this today I'm representing a Thurston County Realtors and I'm making this uh public comments. And today I am uh speaking on behalf of Thurston County Realtors Climate Mitigation Task Force Chair. And we like to, we created a statement regarding this as well. So I'd like to read the statement first and I'm gonna follow up with that as well. So here's our statement. I will also file this uh to the email so that you'll have the statement on the record. So Thurston County Realtors Art Association's um position statement reads, "The Thurston County Realtors Association, T C R A, is uh is recognize the importance in all uh coordination uh coordination and the effective action that uh action that reduces maybe uh impact of impact of our climate change and 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 commands the work that uh T C M P has done so far. All citizen must take a strong and serious stance for that uh issues that will benefit sustainable of our communities that we are living. However, we at the T C R A also recognize the potential harmful impact and additional burden that may be placed on the homeowners, uh business owners and property owners in our community. We must create a balance between the protecting the environment of our environment and the environment impact on the all members of our community. Realtors have always recommended policy that incentivize as well as provide a clear path of the solution rather than regulations and just opposition. It is T C R A's goal and hope that we can uh continue to work with your council to find a good solution for all the citizen in our community. So that is our statement and I will file this as a uh as a public uh to the to the email of the council. And we have been working very closely with the T cap and trying at least on the housing area that we've been uh to come with agreement and so forth. And that has been addressed to some of you and most of the jurisdiction as well. And we are like to continue to work with them, but we would like to have a continued and have a closer relationship with your city council and your staff to continue that relationship and continue the discussion and to provide solution and advices to create a sustainable community that T C M P has uh directed us to do. And we really thank you for the service that you do for our community. And also we'd like continue to have a closer relationship with your council and the staff on this matter. And I thank you for allowing me to speak uh this evening. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Appreciate your uh public comments. And we have one more person who's signed up. It's uh Claire Richmond. You can bring her in and Claire, there you go. If you can unmute yourself and turn your video on. Let us know where you're from and comment about three minutes.
Hello, council. So I am Claire Richmond and my office is in Olympia. However, I do business in the city of Lacey and represent several H O A and condominium associations. And I just wanted to take a moment and recognize the city of Lacey, um Jenny Bowersfield and her team for a fabulous um H O A Academy on the sixth. Um, it was a Saturday session. It was very well attended and successful and we are just thrilled that this beneficial program is back. And um I just want you to know how important it is to um all of the associations that um attended. And even those that didn't attend, um it's still beneficial to them as well and uh myself included. So thank you very much.
Thank you and thank you for that feedback. Yeah, Jenny's a rock star and she's been putting these on for a little bit and they've always been very well tended and um we've always gotten really good feedback. So thank you, really appreciate you taking your time to let us know how how beneficial it was to you. So that is um all I have for the uh verbal public comments today. We're gonna go on to our next agenda item, which is a public hearing. It'll be our final twenty twenty-two uh budget hearing. I'll turn it over to our finance director, Troy Wu.
Alright, thank you, Mayor Ryder. Good evening or good afternoon, council. Um, as the mayor said, we are reaching the final steps of our budget process and we are about to conduct uh the final public hearing on the budget. This is the third and final hearing. Uh, the council previously conducted two public hearings related to revenue sources and just a general public hearing on the budget itself, and that was two weeks ago on fourth. Um, we believe the budget as presented does consider all the guidance and policy direction that the council has provided throughout this process. So I'm looking at the two thousand twenty-two budget in total. It is one hundred and seventy-three million, six hundred and fifty thousand, four hundred and sixty-seven dollars. This is a decrease of about sixteen point five million compared to the amended two thousand twenty-one budget. And the primary reasons for the decrease is the completion or substantial completion of certain one-time capital projects and fewer uh one-time interfund transfers related to those projects. Um, in general, the capital reductions are uh partially offset by increasing labor costs and other workforce considerations um that were presented during the city manager's presentation. And looking at the general fund budget uh for two thousand twenty-two, uh, this is the budget I think our citizens most identify with in terms of services. Police parks, streets as uh an example. So the total proposed budget is sixty million, ninety-one thousand, six hundred and fifteen dollars. This is a decrease of about three hundred thousand or just a half a percent compared to the amended two thousand twenty-one general fund budget. Uh, the primary reasons for this decrease are very similar to the overall budget, lower capital projects, fewer transfers. Uh, most notably in terms of capital projects, we did have the completion of the two thousand twenty-one uh veteran services hub tenant improvements, which we of course just celebrated this week. So that's one of the major differences. Um, I do wanna point out that in terms of changes to the budget uh compared to what was presented by the city manager and what is posted on our website. And we do have a uh an increase to the budget related to uh property tax projections. And what the reason behind that is because of the two thousand twenty-one refund levy and a slight adjustment to new construction adjustments. So that uh increase is just under fifty-five thousand dollars. So the purpose of tonight's hearing is to accept any public testimony as well as receive any final direction from the city council as any changes it would like to see to the budget. And you are scheduled to uh consider adopting a budget uh at your next meeting, which is December second. So with that, I'll turn it back over to the council for any questions and any further guidance you may have.
Is there anything uh from the council? And um according to my records, we didn't have anyone from the public side give testimony today on uh this final budget uh hearing um either. So with that, um, thank you, Troy. Appreciate it. And um we'll go on to our next agenda item. Um, which
Final order?
Yep.
Do you need to open up the hearing and then close it down even though
That's a good question. Dave, since I know I see Dave's here. Uh, if if no members of the public are here, do I do I open it and then just close it? Uh, you're on mute.
Sorry about that. I don't think that would be necessary. The opportunity's been provided. We've conducted
Okay.
raised the issue on the agenda as we move forward.
Okay, thank you. Appreciate it. So now we'll go on to uh proclamations. Um, and the first up on our proclamation and hopefully um Hanford's uh here as well. We can bring him in at the end. Um, is is a proclamation um for November to be Native American Heritage Month. And uh we'll we'll get started with that. Turn it over to you, Malcolm.
Whereas, since time immemorial, Native Americans, Alaskan natives, Native Hawaiians and indigenous peoples have built vibrant and diverse cultures safeguarding land, language, spirit, knowledge and tradition across generations and
Whereas indigenous people have played a vital role in every stage of our nation's history and their contributions have enhanced the social, political, environmental and economic well-being of the United States of America and local communities like Lacey and
Whereas Nisqually people of Medicine Creek Treaty were the first inhabitants of what is now the city of Lacey, having lived in the greater watershed since time immemorial and
Whereas the city would like to recognize that we are on the lands of the Nisqually people of Medicine Creek Treaty and acknowledge the history and disposition that allowed us to grow our community and
Whereas the city offers respect to Nisqually people of Medicine Creek Treaty and their elders, past, present and emerging and
Whereas our community reaffirms its commitment to respect and preserve the traditions and culture and to honor the unique heritage of our first inhabitants.
Now, therefore, I, Andy Ryder, mayor of the city of Lacey and on behalf of the city council, hereby proclaim the month of November twenty twenty-one as Native American Heritage Month in the city of Lacey. And I encourage all community members to commemorate this month in appropriate programs and activities. Signed by myself, Mayor Andy Ryder, on today's date, November eighteenth, twenty twenty-one. And sure is Hanford here.
Thank you, Mayor.
Well, there you are.
Good one, buddy. It's good to see you.
Under Hill Weekwood I MacLeod, so thank you, city council members there of Lacey. And it's, let me say, it's an honor to to represent the Nisqually people here tonight to accept the the Native American uh Heritage Month proclamation. And it it really does, you know, touch with us here in the Nisqually with with how much, not only work and time, but you know, the the relationships that we've had, you know, uh gone through and where we're where we're looking to for the future. And also bringing our our youth along with us here in in today's society, which is really awesome. So um to everybody there who's who's watching, you know, my hands go up to the city of Lacey and the residents there also. So it's it's a, like I said, a great honor today to accept this.
Thank you and I we are so proud of our our relationship and 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 proud to be here and on your land and and uh and have this relationship that we do. It 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 means the world to to us that we continue to work together. And um and I I think every month is uh is celebrating uh our 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 history together. So uh thank you for all you do and we look forward to our continued uh relationship.
Thank you.
So next up under proclamations is um our Small Business Saturday proclamation. And so I'll get started on this one, the Save Lacey official proclamation. Whereas the city of Lacey celebrates and supports our local small businesses and recognizes the significant contributions they make to our local economy and community and
Whereas there are currently over thirteen hundred small businesses in the city of Lacey and three thirty-one point seven million small businesses in the United States, which represents ninety-nine point seven percent of firms with paid employees. And they are responsible for sixty-five point one percent of the net new jobs created from two thousand to twenty nineteen.
Whereas small businesses employ forty-seven point one percent of the employees in the private sector in the United States. Eighty-eight percent of U S consumers feel a personal commitment to support small businesses in the wake of the pandemic. And ninety-two percent of small business owners have pivoted the way they do business to stay open during the pandemic and
Whereas ninety-seven percent of small business Saturday shoppers recognize the impact they can make by shopping small. Eighty-five percent of them have encouraged friends and family to do so too and
Whereas small businesses contribute contribute positively to the local community by supplying jobs and generating tax revenue and are critical to the overall economic health of the United States and
Whereas with the onset of the coronavirus pandemic, the city of Lacey recognized local small businesses as the foundation of Lacey's economy and that there would be detrimental and likely irretrievable effect on vitally important local businesses in the community. And to help support these businesses, the city, Lacey City Council led the region by committing one million dollars to mitigate economic impacts to local small business.
Whereas advocacy groups and public and private organizations in our community and across the country have endorsed the Saturday after Thanksgiving, a small business Saturday.
Now, therefore, I, Andy Ryder, mayor of the city of Lacey, on behalf of the Lacey City Council, do hereby proclaim November twenty-seventh, twenty twenty-one a Small Business Saturday in the city of Lacey. And I encourage community members to support small businesses and merchants on Small Business Saturday and throughout the year. Signed myself, Mayor Andy Ryder, on today's date, November eighteenth, twenty twenty-one. And we'll turn this over uh to Blake. Blake?
Well, thank you, Mayor Ryder, and thank you, council member. It is truly an honor to be here today and to receive this on behalf of the Lacey South Sound Chambers and the business members of Lacey. So thank you so much for recognizing this with a proclamation and uh we appreciate it. And again, it is an honor to be here on behalf of our chamber members.
Thank you. So now let's go on to our uh next agenda item, which is under resolutions. And it's the first one's resolution eleven oh nine. Troy, thanks, Blake.
Alright, thank you again, Mayor Ryder. For your consideration tonight is the first of two items related to the two thousand twenty-two property tax. Um, this resolution um will authorize the one percent increase. So as you know, by state law, the uh increase, the maximum increase for a jurisdiction is one percent or inflation. Um, this year's inflation factor is three point eight six percent. So we're looking at the one percent limit. Um, state law also requires that a separate action be taken. So the uh normal property tax ordinance um needs to be um adopted separately from this action. Um, for the city, um, I do wanna point out the exceptions to the one percent. I know those exceptions are new construction. So as new properties are added to the property tax rolls, they can be added in excess of the one percent. Uh, the same goes for annexation adjustments, uh which we do have annexation adjustments for this year. And then uh wind turbines as well as state assessed uh utility property. So the action tonight will um allow us to comply with the state law that requires a separate action and will authorize the county to assess uh the city's two thousand twenty-two property tax with the one percent, which is equal to seventy-five thousand, eight hundred and eighty-three dollars. So the action request of you tonight is to adopt the resolution authorizing this one percent increase. I haven't answered any questions, I have.
Can I get a motion?
I move that we adopt resolution relating to the two thousand twenty-two ad valorem tax increase, resolution number eleven oh nine.
Second.
Second. It's been moved in second. Is there any discussion? Well, I think this is the one year that we can really um feel good actually about where we're at when it comes to property taxes. Does uh let the public know, uh, we paid off some some um bonds that were out there. And so our 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 taxes are actually going down um in the city of Lacey, even after this one percent that they're gonna be going down for. So uh I feel pretty good about uh this at at this moment. Any other discussion? Seeing none, all in favor of the motion signify by saying aye.
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 Thank you. Is there anyone opposed? Then that motion carries. And let's go on to the res- the next resolution, um, resolution uh eleven ten. And that's today.
Yes, thank you, Mr. Mayor, council members. Before you now is a proposed resolution number one ten, which would uh amend the temporary procedures put in place at the beginning of the pandemic. So in uh it was in March of twenty twenty that the council adopted resolution ten eighty-seven, providing for temporary procedures. Now, that resolution put into place, uh suspended certain council meeting procedures. It changed the time to four P M. It canceled work sessions. It uh waived utility billing interest and late fees and penalties. It deferred B and O taxes until July of that year, suspended the plastic bag ordinance, and then provided some amendments to the sign regulations. So shortly thereafter, in June of twenty twenty, if council will recall, we readdressed that resolution and removed some of the suspensions to council meetings, putting back into place public comment, um reinstating work sessions. And and everything else was status quo. So now we're at the point where there's three additional amendments to this resolution that we're suggesting. First is the section, previously section two, which directed directly with uh interest charges, late fees, enforcement action on delinquent utility accounts. So this council was first to the game, but about a month or so after you uh suspended that action, Governor Inslee's proclamation uh followed suit. That proclamation um expired, however, in September of twenty twenty-one. So that put in place uh sequence of events where we need to start, you know, re- that put in place uh sequence of events where we need to start, you know, re, you know, taking action now against um any delinquent accounts and providing notice of their of their necessary payment, uh doing whatever is necessary to collect it, uh or else we'll risk losing it. So the first uh suggested edit would be that we remove that suspension. The second two are more um you know, more just checking off boxes. Uh the the B and O taxes is is irrelevant, it's no longer effective, so that we're requesting that just be cleaned up. And then, of course, the state superseded our uh bag ban in itself and and thus our our action there is no longer effective. So having to answer any questions, the uh the recommendation, of course, is to adopt resolution number one ten amending the temporary procedures.
Move to approve resolution eleven ten?
Second.
Second. And move in second discussion. Um Scott, can you tell me in a in a practical terms uh how we're gonna go forward with the utility collections? Um you know, obviously, I know we have quite a few that are are past past due. I mean, I think we're um obviously at an all time high there, but uh obviously, there's been some people been really have been hurt, you know, through all this. So are what what's gonna be the plan? Or you expect them to have to pay all up on day one, you know, when when this passes? Or how are we gonna move forward with that?
That's a great question, Mayor. So our intent is to let everyone know that you are no longer um I guess, and I guess the restriction of collecting the past due bills are no longer in play with this resolution. We intend to reach all those folks that have past due bills to allow them to provide a twenty four month payment plan. And we'll also be communicating there are funds available through the Community Action Council. So there's some additional relief that they actually have been impacted by COVID nineteen. Um this is gonna be uh an effort obviously with our utility billing um division to try to get that communication out. Notices will go out, but again, I think our immediate is to give them relief by giving them a a payment plan, but also let them know there are available community resources out there to hopefully alleviate some of that past due bill.
That's great. Uh Councilor Greenstein?
So question on that, Scott. With the twenty four month payment plan, there'll be no interest or penalties accrued during that twenty four month period, correct?
Correct.
Good.
Councilor Stedman?
Yeah, um yeah, I'm uh just glad that Scott mentioned Community Action Council. They also have several other programs like rental assistance and stuff like that can um help with monies that can be diverted also to their that wouldn't normally be used on rent you could use on utilities. So thanks for mentioning that, Scott. It's a great resource.
It's a this is gonna be really important, and hopefully the the public can hear us. There is dollars out there available for you um and to help you. And there's a lot of people who have um who qualify for this, who haven't taken advantage of it. And there's been a lot of talk across the jurisdictions on 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 why this is happening. Why are people not taking advantage of the dollars are out that are out there? And some of it is there's people just don't believe that this is real, right? That they don't believe that there's actually grants available to to help them. And so they um there's uh unfortunately, there's a a lack of trust sometimes in in governments, and this is this is one of those times. And so um but if you have if you're separating, if you're behind on your Lacey utilities bill, please contact the Community Action Council. There's dollars that they've received from the federal government. That's it's all of our dollars going back, you know, to help. And um the counties also receive extra dollars um for this as well. So there there is some help out there for you. And so please, reach out to Community Action Council. We'll do everything we can to get you that information, but please don't hesitate to do that. Uh Councilor McGreenstein?
Yeah, there's one other quick question. How are we gonna reach out to the individuals to make sure they know about the twenty four months and to know about the the other money that's out there? Are we gonna individually reach out to those people that are behind, or how will that be handled?
I mean, I defer to Troy. Troy's been working on a plan, but that's essentially it. And I guess just to emphasize what the mayor said, there is help out there, but please also sign the twenty four month payment option. I mean, it will give yourself some time, even if there's help out there. Um that's the best way to alleviate, because our remedy is to turn off the water service, and we're trying to avoid that.
Sure. So we're we're going to actually direct mail all delinquent accounts next week. Um it's going to we're going to start up the notification in terms of delinquencies um with the kind of the normal delinquency language, so the pre-COVID language. Going to have a a cover letter that both explains the fact that the city is offering a twenty four month payment plan. It's also going to touch on the uh opportunities that are available at Community Action Council. And we're actually going to include a form uh or an agreement, so to speak, on the payment plan, so customers could start filling out that paperwork immediately, get it back to us, and, you know, protect their their water usage or their availability. So we're going to kind of gauge to see what kind of response we get. Uh we're open to picking up the phone and calling each other account as well. I mean, this is important that this information get out. And therefore, like I said, preserve their their water service. Because I, you know, it's been such a long time that we, as the mayor said, we need to get this information out and alert people that things are changing indeed changing.
Yeah, and
Thank you very much.
Yeah, and some even the timeline on some of those dollars that are available, um I know some of the dollars expire at the end of the year too, so we don't we don't have a ton of time. Um so um hopefully, uh we yeah, whatever it takes, the direct mail's o- okay, but uh you know, email, whatever other uh you know, forms of communication that we have, it's gonna be really good. Councilor Cox?
Um we're going to be addressing water rates in this meeting tonight, and I'm wondering, given that some people are going to be having to deal with repayment plus higher water bills, whether we might include some education on water conservation tips for people that might help them lower their water bills a bit? Whether it's in a water bill, whether it's in the the city uh newsletter, our website, I mean, there's lots of options, but I think that might be helpful.
You know, in um I know every year, the city of Lacey does a lot when it comes to conservation. Matter of fact, our conservation efforts have been very successful here in 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 Lacey, and which allows us to have, you know, safe drinking water for our growing community. Um and then I it seems like every summer, we do this big push um for water conservation and redates and stuff like that, but I'm not sure how much how effective that was this past year um with COVID and people coming in. Scott, do you have any information? Like, do we do we even do it this year like we did have in years past?
Though we do, it's really a combination of our um alternative watering. Um that has been probably one of our most effective ways, just to use water more efficiently. That's part of it. And with that consistent message every year, we also talk about water conservation. We provide a lot of help to HOAs. We provide stuff on our website about um native landscaping that uses less water, all those type of um, you know, information is out there. Um obviously, it was a unique um summer just because it was drier, and we had obviously um some extreme heat days. Um but a- again, weather does have a big play in that in terms of what water usage is.
But I know that we've had like um low floor flow shower heads available at the city of Lacey and a bunch of stuff like that. Do we do we still have that stuff on hand?
We still do that, correct?
Councilor Cox?
Yeah, that that's getting more to what I was thinking is, you know, taking shorter showers, there's way to collect water from your shower that can be used to water your plants and other other ways of saving water year round.
Yeah. Okay. It's always always good advice to talk about conservation. Um is there any other? Notes? Then we have a a motion and a second to adopt the resolution eleven ten, amending resolution ten eighty seven relating to the temporary procedures in response to the COVID nineteen emergency. All in favor of that motion? Signify by saying aye.
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 If you're opposed, then the motion carries. We passed that resolution, and now we're on to ordinances. And we have quite a few here, and I know I think Troy's gonna sort of talk about them all at once, right? And then we're gonna we're gonna go back and do it, or how do you wanna do that, Troy?
That's correct. If it pleases the council, I will present the three utility rate ordinances in one presentation and turn it back over to council for separate action, and then we'll take the property tax uh after that, if that's okay.
Perfect.
Okay, let me share my screen for you. Okay, I hope you could see my presentation. So we've had a lot of discussion about utility rates. Um really, the discussion began last summer, so the summer of two thousand twenty as as COVID was really in its infancy stages. Um the finance committee really started to have discussions about utility rates as it related to the financial challenges we were um expecting out there in our community. And so we started talking about what to do with utility rates going forward, and that conversation continued into two thousand uh twenty one's budget process. And in the end, the city council chose to provide a financial relief of at least six months for a utility rate, so it did not take any action on two thousand twenty one rates at the time of the the budget adoption. Um I do want to spend a little time talking about what happened, just because I think it does inform of where we're at today. Um so the slide on screen here is the same slides that we showed this summer as we were starting these discussions. Um the the nice thing about the deferral of utility rates, it allowed the draft uh water comprehensive plan update to be uh completed. So we had a more complete picture of what rates might look like in the long term. So again, that was a unexpected benefit, I think, of delaying those rates. So um when we were having discussions with the council, and we really talked about three different scenarios at that time, and what you're seeing here on screen is scenario one, which is the was that draft uh uh comp plan update, what it was recommending. So it assumed no increase in two thousand twenty one, which resulted in uh six point five percent rate increases for the next six years, the years covering two thousand twenty two through twenty seven. Um at the time, the council wanted to see a three percent scenario, so a three percent midyear rate increase for two thousand twenty one and a five percent midyear rate increase. I won't talk about the three percent impacts because the council did act on the five percent um option. And the reason the council did that, it could really see the future in terms of uh some of those higher increases for the next six years, and wanted to mitigate that impact. And really, what the the impact of that five percent midyear increase was a decrease of one point two five percent per year in terms of rate increase over that six year period. And it also reduces the um debt being projected uh throughout that period by about one point five million dollars. So definitely had a significant impact in terms of uh its long term impact to the rates. Um we were able to um adjust the financial chapter within the water comp plan update um to that five point two five percent um level. And uh of course, that's what we're presenting uh for you for you tonight. Uh and you, the council and the public, will see that water comp plan in two thousand twenty two in terms of the public process, as well as consideration for update. And we'll, of course, include these uh rate increases you see here at the bottom of the screen. Um the council also spent a great deal of time talking about the water or the wastewater and sewer rates. Um very similar conversation. But the main difference is we're in between uh comp plan updates for sewer. Um the legislation actually changed on the requirement of the update for the wastewater comp plan and basically extended that period in which you have to update that. So the next update actually isn't due until two thousand twenty three. Uh the problem or the challenge of that is we have a gap in the long term rate recommendation. Uh basically, we didn't have one at at the time we started these discussions. So we asked the city's water um rate consultant to take a look at the revenue requirements for um wastewater. Um a couple of reasons. We obviously wanted to bridge bridge that long term gap in terms of the rate recommendation. Uh but we also wanted to take a look at the proper balance between uh the water and sewer funds in terms of the subject to sewer abatement program. It's a water quality issue, of course, benefits both the utilities, so we wanted to make sure that we had that balance um correct between the two utilities. So um again, that delay really benefited us in being able to have a clear picture as what the future was going to look like. So again, scenario one, similar to water. Uh this was the consultant's recommendation at the time, which again assumed no increase for two thousand twenty one. And the result was a ten point five percent per year rate increase from two thousand twenty two through twenty seven. Again, the council wanted to to uh be able to analyze and take a look at a three percent and five percent scenario. Um again, we'll we'll skip over the results of the three percent since the council did act on the five percent midyear rate increase. And it's very similar thought process, I believe, in terms of the council adopting the five percent. Um you know, the ability to look into the future and the uh financial impact of the consultant's recommendation. Uh so the impacts of that five percent midyear increase, it dropped the annual rate increase by one percent. And it also reduced the debt projection by one point five million dollars over this period. Uh Stormwater is a little bit different in terms of the timing of its um comprehensive plan. Uh the city council actually adopted the Stormwater Comprehensive Plan in November of two thousand twenty. It included within that comp plan update was uh rate increases of four point five percent for a six year period covering two thousand twenty through two thousand twenty five. Of course, uh we're already in two thousand twenty two, believe it or not, so we're actually in the third year of this comp. So the 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 ordinances for your consideration tonight um reflect exactly what the draft comp plan uh for water indicates, as well as the uh revenue requirement plan for for sewer, and of course, the adopted Stormwater Comp Plan recommendation. So for water, um for a customer that uses seven hundred cubic feet per month, I might expect a dollar fifty five per month increase, again equalling the five point two five percent uh in the draft comp plan. Uh the sewer impact on a residential customer is two dollars and nineteen cents per month for the nine point five percent. A recommendation that was in the revenue requirement study. And then Stormwater's uh projected increase for a residential customer is fifty six cents per month, more of that four point five percent that is in the adopted Stormwater Comp Plan. Um of course, these are not individual, they don't have individual impacts on our residents, so we do want to show the entire um utility bill. Um so what you're seeing here on screen is actually the current uh typical residential monthly bill, again, using the seven hundred cubic feet of water use. Um and what you're seeing here on screen in addition is the Lot Clean Water Alliance uh rate. So a typical resident currently might be paying about a hundred and seven dollars per month. So when we apply the proposed increases for uh water, sewer, and stormwater, as well as the three percent increase adopted by the lot board, um a typical resident, again, using seven hundred cubic feet, uh would experience a monthly bill of a hundred and twelve dollars and eighty one cents. This is about five dollars and fifty cents more per month in two thousand twenty two. Um we do um like to show the utility rate comparisons to our neighbors. We're very different utilities, but it's very natural to want to know what your next door neighbors are are experiencing. So here on screen, you're seeing the three, the first three columns from the left are the current um utility bills, monthly bills for Olympia, Tomwater, and Lacey. Then the fourth column there in the far right is uh the proposed with the proposed rate increases for two thousand twenty two. So I'll turn this back over to council for any uh questions or or discussion, but again, we would recommend the adoption of the the ordinances before you in three separate actions. Go ahead and stop sharing. Back to you, council.
Councilor Greenstein?
One quick question, Troy, on the overall. Do we know what the twenty two rates look like for our neighbors? I mean, we know what our increase is. Do we have any idea what the neighbor jurisdictions are doing?
Um the last in their proposed budgets, um I don't have it in terms of dollars, but uh for Olympia, they were looking at a one percent increase for water, six percent for sewer, five percent for stormwater. Um I think that's gonna be roughly the same in terms of dollars, um the full dollar comparison to Lacey. Uh Tomwater's budget included a four percent increase for water, four point eight for sewer, and four percent for stormwater. And they're already uh, a little bit lower than, than Olympia and Lacy. So it's probably going to keep that, kind of that same, same difference in terms of uh, total reasons.
Councilor Sebman.
Um, I would move to adopt water rate ordinance sixteen oh three, setting the two thousand twenty-two water rates.
Just sorry, before, can't, can't we, can't we do this in one motion? Can't we adopt ordinance sixteen oh three, sixteen oh four and sixteen oh five?
Well, defer to legal counsel on that, but I, I think.
Yes, as long as it's clear um, and precise, that could be accomplished.
I guess, council, would you recommend at least in the motion to identify each ordinance so there is clarity?
Sure. Could you, could you do that? Mike?
Yeah, um, I'm going to the agenda here to so I can pull the numbers right here. Uh, yes, there's sixteen oh three, four, five and six?
Sixteen oh three, sixteen oh four, sixteen oh five, sixteen oh three is the water rate, sixteen oh four is the wastewater rate, and sixteen oh five is the stormwater.
Okay, I, I would make a motion to accept the utility, uh, the ordinance is sixteen oh three for the water rate, the sixteen oh four for the um, this, the, the sewer rate and sixteen oh five for the stormwater, or did I get that reversed?
Sixteen, sixteen oh four is the wastewater and sixteen oh five is the stormwater. I think we got that.
Okay.
Is there a second?
A second.
It's been moving second to adopt ordinance is sixteen oh three, which is the twenty twenty-two water rate. Uh, ordinance is sixteen oh four, which is twenty twenty-two wastewater rate, and ordinance sixteen oh five, which is the twenty twenty-two stormwater rate. Is there any discussion? Seeing none, all in favor?
I have something. I have something.
Sorry.
I, I just wanted to say, um, I, I believe Lacy has a rich history and have proven to um, the rate payers, which are the taxpayers, um, the utility rate payers of, of these programs that were very responsible when taking care of our infrastructure. So it works every day, while they're sleeping, while they're awake, when they're at work, when they're at home, on vacation, whatever. It works. And if it isn't, someone's on, on the job, uh, getting it to work and, and they don't even know about it. And that's the reason why it's working is because you never hear about it. There's people out there every day, in good weather, bad weather, et cetera. I could beat this horse to death. But we, we work to make their quality of life better so they don't have to worry about things um, like backup drains and stuff. It still happens, but very unlikely because we take care of business.
It's, it's good, it's a good point, you know, and I was having this discussion with some other elected officials at a conference right now. It's like um, every, you know, government, especially government, when, when it works, um, you ne- you never hear anything, right? It's just like, uh, that, and, and, and this in particular, our rates are one hundred, I mean, mostly based on our, our capital improvement plan, right? So there's things that we have to do to replace pipes to, you know, in this case, you know, we're, we're having new water reservoirs and all the, all these other things that we're doing. And so that all happens behind the scenes and you turn your water on and it works, flush your toilet and it goes away. You know, we never, we never think about it because it, because it works, you know? And the only time you ever really hear any things is that when you turn your water on and it doesn't work for some reason. And then, you know, then uh, you know, things fall apart and, you know, but we, we've done a really good job in Lacy, um, with our water replacement and um, everything that we've done. And, and as Troy pointed out, the city, how our system is so much different than, say, Olympia, we're going to Tom Water system where it was sort of built from the core out. Where, where in Lacy, we had all these different systems that we had to years ago, try to turn into one system. And it's been, you know, hard to do. Um, but we're, we're finally have a pretty good system that's in place and, um, and ready to serve our citizens. And you turn the water on and, and it comes on. And so I just wanted to uh, point that out and also let them know that, you know, we're not just raising rates for, to raise rates, we're raising rates based on our, our capital improvement plan, which is um, instead of having to go out and borrow a bunch of money, um, we're able to do this with, with cash on hand. And that's, that makes a big difference as well. Deputy Mayor?
One of the things people forget about is that in order to do maintenance and operations and everything, the cost of equipment and um, everything is going up by over three percent. And so it, it, you know, this barely covers that type of um, keeping up ser- services.
It's true. Is there any other discussion? There's a motion and a second to adopt these three ordinances, you know, for each sixteen oh four and sixteen oh five. All in favor of that motion, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
And is there anyone opposed? Then that motion carries and we have adopted those ordinances. And now we'll go to ordinance sixteen oh six, which is the, the property tax levy. Troy?
Thank you again, Mr. Mayor. Hopefully you could see my shared screen. So for your consideration tonight is the ordinance that will set the City of Lacey two thousand and twenty-two property tax levy. We do have uh, really four main reasons we're um, seeing a change in our property tax projection for next year. Uh, you could see here on screen, uh, the four different changes to the uh, Lacey levy. So we have our new construction credit of two hundred and thirteen thousand one hundred and ninety-eight dollars. Uh, this is a result of the addition of about two hundred and eleven million dollars of new assessments from new property improvements. And we do have an annexation adjustment of a hundred and fifteen thousand three hundred and twenty-three dollars. This is a result of the annexation, the, the Marvin and Silicon annexation earlier this year. And you could see the one percent revenue limit in which you took action on a little bit earlier in the meeting, seventy-five thousand eight hundred and eighty-three dollars. And then the two thousand twenty-one refund levy of fifty-three thousand eight hundred and sixty-four dollars. And again, that refund levy is related to adjustments that were made in the current year. Um, reductions downwards. In, in other words, um, there might have been a technical error, there may have been an adjustment to um, an assessment or an exemption. So that didn't change our legal um, limit and therefore we're able to carry that forward into the next year. So your total two thousand twenty-two property tax levy is projected at eight million forty-six thousand six hundred and twelve dollars. Um, the mayor stole my thunder a little bit, but that's okay. I'm not used to presenting good news. So happy to give that credit to the mayor. But uh, overall, the city of Lacey next year will be collecting less in property tax than it is this year. And that, again, as the mayor indicated, is due to the uh, paying off of the fire safety bonds from two thousand and two. That was a voter-approved bond levy. And we're making that final payment here in the next couple of weeks, which means we no longer have to assess that levy to the property owners of Lacey. So that's essentially going to be a four hundred and sixty-three thousand dollar decrease. Um, you could see the overall impact to the general levy increase of about four hundred, four hundred and fifty-eight thousand. And then just the impact that debt service requirement for the two outstanding bonds that we have for parks. I do want to illustrate again the um, impact on a typical home in Lacey. Um, this is a slight change from what was presented at the revenue hearing two weeks ago. And we do have the final certification of uh, assessed value for Lacey. And that's reflected in this uh, this slide here. The overall increase to um, assessed valuation for Lacey is just over thirteen percent, thirteen point zero seven percent, which is an increase from what we presented um, two weeks ago. So, you know, we take a median uh, house sale right now in Lacey of four hundred and fifty thousand. We back out the thirteen point one percent um, increase to valuation, you have assessed value of three hundred and ninety-eight thousand um, uh, in terms of valuation. You could see that we've applied the two thousand twenty-one rates. Um, the house this year at three hundred ninety-eight thousand in assessed valuation is paying just under four hundred and forty-two dollars uh, for two thousand twenty-one property taxes. If you apply the new projected levy rates and the four hundred and fifty thousand dollar assessed valuation, um, a typical home may pay four hundred and, just over four hundred and thirty thousand, or four hundred and thirty dollars per year, which is an overall decrease of about eleven dollars next year. So again, we're likely to see a decrease in uh, property tax uh, for Lacey. So I'll turn this back over to the council, but the recommendation is to pass the ordinance setting the two thousand and twenty-two City of Lacey uh, general levy rate as well as the uh, debt levies.
Can I, can I get a motion, please? Oh, Deputy Mayor, mute, unmute.
Don't it. Um, I move that we adopt the Ad Valorem Tax Ordinance sixteen oh six.
Thank you.
The movement seconded. Is there any discussion? So I, I just have a quick question, Troy. Uh, you talked about, um, we, I saw the annexation numbers in, in there and you said it was the Marvin Road annexation. Did the numbers not get included for the Cap City there annexation?
Not yet. So I believe the assessment role year ends at the end of August. So if the Justice Office isn't able to perform that valuation before the end of August, it doesn't get included, it goes to the next year. So.
That, that will be, that'll be included in the next years then.
That's correct.
Is there any other discussion? Well, I just wanted to say, I, you know, I appreciate some of the, the work we've been, we did this year with trying to explain property taxes and levies to, to the public. It's, it's pretty confusing and um, you know, it's, it's, it's still confusing. The, the whole um, uh, refund levy is something that's still uh, is, is a little confusing to me. Um, you know, that there is this assessment, but they came back and you it's like, well, they didn't have to pay it, but then we still get to collect it. I, that well, that's, I guess, for next year, trying to deep dive a little bit more into that. Uh, but uh, the good news here is, as we pointed out, um, it looks like uh, our property taxes are, of course, the way C is going down next year. And that's, that's a good thing. And I also appreciate that, um, we actually have the, the median house uh, cost of the house in our, in our projections as well. That's something I used to gripe about a little bit in, in the past. We just pick a three hundred thousand as a, as a number, as a typical, you know, and uh, which wasn't necessarily related to what the average house is. But I guess it also points out how expensive an average home is now in the City of Lacey too. And that, it's, that's a little heartbreaking seeing that number. Um, who could, you know, who your first time home buyer and you have to four hundred and fifty thousand dollars for a house? I mean, that's just, which is what it's at. I'm sure, I'm sure, I'm sure Ed can tell us.
At least that much, yeah, at least that much.
Yeah. And so that's, that is, that is heartbreaking. I mean, I don't know. As a, you know, young family trying to get in a home, a young, you know, military couple is starting off their family trying to buy the first house and they have four hundred and fifty thousand dollars. Oh my goodness. So. But that being said, at least on the property tax side, let's, let's get to go down in Lacey. And that's a, that's a good thing. So. Is there any other discussion? Then there's a motion, a second to adopt ordinance sixteen oh six relating to our two thousand twenty-two property tax levy. All in favor of that motion, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Is there anyone opposed? Then that motion carries. Then the last ordinance is ordinance sixteen oh seven uh, relating to our GFC charges. This looks like it's Scott Hager. Our Public Works Director. Move beyond.
Good evening, Mayor and Council. Uh, you have before you right now a proposed ordinance to amend LMC thirteen point three two point zero zero five to update the water general facility charges. So this item was presented to the utility committee on November first by Brandon McAllister. Uh, unfortunately, Brandon's on vacation, so you have me in a pinch hitting for Brandon. So I think most of you know, the general facility charges are basically the cost to buy into the system when a new developer, you know, new sites developed. And so we, City of Lacey, we reevaluate our general facility charges when we perform uh, these utility comp plan updates. And as you know, we just uh, updated our water service plan. So our financial consultant who does our rate analysis did a, a general facility charge analysis for us. And uh, that analysis resulted in this proposed amendment that you have before you. So I'm gonna, I'm gonna share a screen here and run through a, a brief presentation. So can you uh, s- see that all right?
Yeah.
Yes.
All right, so. Uh, anyway, the, the proposed changes to LMC thirteen point three two point zero zero five are as follows. So they recommended adopting a GFC of eight thousand three hundred and seventy-four dollars for a five-eighths inch meter. That's the baseline meter effective January first twenty twenty-two. And all other meters are a multiple of that. So they're, they're, this is basically a recalibration and, and setting a, a, a new baseline. So then that's for twenty twenty-two and twenty twenty-three and beyond. Their recommendation is adjusted GFCs by the annual uh, change in the, in our construction cost index. And they are saying specifically use the twenty-city E and R cost, construction cost index. We've always used the E and R uh, CCI, but the twenty, the, the twenty-city is more level, so you don't see the spikes that you do for local. And then the previous uh, or, or as written right now, LMC thirteen thirty-two oh five says to increase that amount either by the cost of inflation or six percent, whatever is more. So, you know, historically inflation runs, you know, say two percent, somewhere down in there. The last time this was evaluated, I think around two thousand thirteen, basically we were undercharging for GFCs. So the consultant recommended leaving that clause in there at that time. Well, now we're caught up, so they're suggesting that we eliminate the six percent clause. So now it will only grow by the uh, twenty-city E and R construction cost index. And then they're also recommending that we specify, you know, that, that time period over which this uh, we take this inflationary period. So we're choosing August over August. And this is really to relieve a bit of an administrative burden. Our, our charges change on January one. So if you go January one to January one, you don't have the E and R CCI until mid-January. So that's somewhat problematic. So this way, we use August to August and then that rate will be plugged in and take effect, you know, the following January. So uh, for August twenty twenty-two, that rate will uh, be plugged in and begin January twenty twenty-three. So the good news is, is this change results in reduced cost. So if you look at the table here, and can you see my little hand floating around the screen? Uh, so these are our current twenty twenty-one charges. So if we apply the current inflationary rate for a five-eighths inch meter, which is our baseline meter, in twenty twenty-two, that amount would be eight thousand nine hundred thirteen dollars for a five-eighths inch meter. And like I said, this is a recalibration, so their suggestion is to set that to eight thousand three hundred and seventy-four for the five-eighths inch meter. And then all these meters are multiples of that. So this is the reduced cost for implementing this proposed LMC change. For a five-eighths inch meter, it's going to cost five hundred and thirty-nine dollars less uh, on up to over twenty-two thousand dollars less for a six-inch meter. So this is the proposed change. It's small font, but as you can see, there's not, not a lot to it. We're re- re-establishing this baseline of eight thousand three hundred and seventy-four in twenty twenty-two. Uh, then uh, we're using the twenty-city average and the August over August. And we're eliminating this, you know, the, the inflationary rate or six percent. So now it'll just be strictly inflationary. And these will be the new rates. Just to get you a feel, I'll give you a feel for how many meters we have of different sizes in our city, uh, just going through this table. Uh, here are different customer types. Here are different meter sizes for each of those customers' types. The numbers that uh, we saw for two thousand fifteen annually through up until twenty twenty-one. And then the full inventory and the percent of that size in that grouping. And then the full inventory and the percent of that size in that grouping. Um, so I'm, I want you to just kind of focus on what's highlighted in yellow and we'll just go down here to the bottom, which is combined total. So this shows you that we have almost twenty-five thousand five eighths inch meters, which was, you know, like a single-family size. And that's over ninety-two percent of the inventory and about nine hundred one inch. And you can see the numbers decreased drastically, uh, down to only sixteen four inches and three six inches. And like the six inches, which are very expensive, um, they were at Chinook Middle School, uh, the Department of Ecology. And, and we installed one at Mountains, Mobile Home Park. Uh, they already had a large meter, but there were some issues, you know, mo- mobile home parks are master metered, uh, so that wasn't at their cost. But that gives you a, a feel for the, the distribution of what's there. And, and just as a reminder, meters are not installed for fire flow systems. So if you have a massive, you know, say a Target or North Point, um, there's, there's not a meter on their fire system because that's an emergency use and it's rarely used. This is, uh, just a little bit of GFCs. They are one-time charges, not ongoing rates. Uh, the, the properties which are already developed do not pay a GFC unless they redevelop. And if they redevelop, uh, if they upsize, what they pay is just the difference between, say, the size meter they already have and if they opt to install a larger meter. So they're credited what they already have. Uh, GFCs are for capital improvements only, uh, and, and so this has nothing to do with O and M. And charges are based on equitable share of existing and future infrastructure capacity that is provided to redevelopment. So this is the equation and simple general facility charge equals the applicable existing and future capital cost divided by the total plant capacity. That's, that's the equation that the consultant uses. Uh, just by way of comparison, this is, you know, where we are, two thousand and twenty-one, eight thousand one hundred and ninety-four. And two thousand and twenty-two will be at eight thousand three hundred and seventy-four. We are at the upper end of the scale, but just as within the rates, um, you know, you can't compare systems. You know, you, they're, they're of different age, of different complexity. Um, you know, you had that conversation, uh, during the, the rate, uh, ordinance discussion. And so I just want to bring this up, this may be a, uh, future conversation. This is a recommendation that the consultant made to us that is not included in this ordinance. Because we felt if, if we want to pursue this, it's gonna require considerably more discussion. So I mentioned to you that we set the rate based on the five eighths inch meter and all the remaining meters are multiples of that. And these are the current multipliers that the City of Lacey has used. The consultant recommended changing that to industry standard, which is America, AWWA M one manual. AWWA is the American Water Works Association, so that is the industry standard. But that would result in an increase to the cost of all the meters. So you can see, you know, five eighths is just baseline, but as soon as you get into a one inch, you're going from a multiple of two to multiple of two point five. On down to a six inch meter, you're going from a multiple of forty-one to a multiple of fifty. So again, this is not in this ordinance. Um, you know, but it may be a future conversation because that is, uh, a recommendation that the consultant made. So with that, uh, I'll unshare and I'll be happy to answer any questions if I have about that.
I just have one question, Scott.
Sure.
Okay. Go ahead. So just so that I'm clear, and I, this, this isn't really gonna make a difference, I don't think, but, um, if a developer absorbs, you know, is, is a developer absorbing the full cost of the six inch? If they should choose to go that route, I know that we don't have any, very many six inch in the, in the, in the city, but let's say, for example, even five at a cost of two ninety-five. And then, then, and then they split that cost, um, amongst the lots or charge per lot? Or do they, do they just absorb the entire cost upfront and then?
So, yeah, that's a great question. Uh, so let me provide some clarity. So you mentioned multiple lots, so when I think of multiple lots, I think of residential. And in residential, every single-family residential has a five eighths inch meter. Um, so, you know, that is applied to every house. Uh, if you take a, a multifamily apartment, they will purchase a single meter, it's master metered. And then, you know, some may choose to, you know, calculate out, or, you know, a fixed rate into their rent. Some may say you're paying for a utility and we have the master meter, but they can sub-meter with a private meter, which doesn't go through our utility billing. So does that help answer your question?
It does, thank you.
Okay.
There's one exception to that. Uh, my family's commercial building has meters separate for all the suites, so one, one tenant can't say, hey, you know, next door neighbor's using all the water and I should get charged less. But that's, that's a substantial cost in initially building buildings too, so, um, not everybody can do that, especially when you're going off the standard rate, which I like your rate better. If it's the same price for five eighths, it should be the same price for a six inch.
Yeah, so if you are, that, that's a, another example. So we talked about residential, we talked about multifamily, but when you get into a, say, a commercial industrial, um, you know, we will have City of Lacey water line. Like, I'll use the Walmart down on Yelm Highway as an example. You know, you have Walmart as the big anchor and then you kind of have those, for lack of better words, you know, strip mall. Uh, so there is a City of Lacey water line that runs onto that private property in an easement that runs around. And there are, you know, Walmart is metered separately from the other businesses and those are City of Lacey meters. So that is another case.
All right, well, I, I would move to adopt ordinance sixteen oh seven to amend the Lacey Municipal Code thirteen point three two point zero zero five to update the water general facilities charges.
Second.
The movement seconded, is there any other discussion?
Um, I, I also like how, um, entities, whoever they are, get credit for what they have existing if you're going to bump up to something else. And that's, you know, you wouldn't think that would be the, um, the case, but it should be the case because you own the, you know, you, you put in those utilities, that infrastructure and you should get credit for that, I believe, so.
Any other discussion?
Great job.
And it's been moved and seconded to adopt ordinance sixteen oh seven relating to the water general facility charges. All in favor of that motion, signify by saying aye.
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 Is there anyone opposed? And that motion carries. Thank you, Scott, have a great night.
Okay, I can make just two comments?
Please.
So, so one, I wanna give kudos to Tom Stiles and his group because, you know, they're the ones that do the development review. And they've had, people have come in where consultants have made recommendations for large meters and based on our experience, they're too large. You know, and Tom and his group are great at going back, like, you know, are you really sure you, you know, you want something this big? So, so kudos to, to Tom and his group. You also mentioned earlier during the rates about water conservation and, uh, I wanna let you know, we're in a process of filming a video PSA for water conservation, but for outdoor use irrigation. So the indoor use, the toilets, the washing machines and all that, um, uh, you know, we're, we're kind of hitting diminishing returns there. You know, people have taken advantage of that for a long time. Now, where there's bigger gains would be outside in irrigation. And, and one thing I would recommend to everybody, if you have a, a, you know, your own personal sprinkler system, if you're like I used to be, you know, I had a top-in electronic programmable irrigation. First year I got it dialed in, I never changed anything after that, you know, and when summer would come, I'd turn it on, same programming. But, you know, if, if a person will just go in and cut back ten percent of the time, if you have multiple circuits that run twenty minutes each, turn them to eighteen minutes each. You know, you'll reduce your water consumption by ten percent. And, you know, your, your lawn might change from lush green to pretty marbled, but it's a consideration. But, but my main message is we will have a video PSA coming out in the spring to encourage irrigation conservation. But thank you very much for approving that and I'll go away now.
Thanks, Scott, appreciate it.
Sure.
So now we're going on to, um, actually, I'm just, uh, the mayor's report's next and I'm gonna jump in here real quick because I think it's, uh, I know we have a long meeting, but I think this is worth, uh, talking about. Uh, I think Deputy Mayor and I have, uh, uh, talked about, uh, we've been in a National League of Cities Conference all, all week. And, um, I've been on, I'm, been on the Board of Directors of the National League of Cities, uh, since two thousand and seventeen. And, uh, during this week's board meeting, um, they released the results of a, a survey that the National League of Cities did. Um, a pretty extensive survey, um, and got the results back. And the survey was, um, have, have you, as an elected official, um, received any, um, um, acts of, of, or threats of violence to you, uh, or your family? And the results came back that showed eighty-one percent of elected officials has received threats of violence to either themselves or their families. And then during the board meeting, we went through and, and listened to several elected officials who, um, people who've shot guns into their houses, who's, um, had, had a police go to their s- um, kids' school to take them out of school. To, to, uh, escort them home and they were in a hotel for weeks on end because they couldn't, they couldn't be safe in their own home. And this is something that's really hit hard for me this, this week, listening to those stories and, and talking about why, why as elected officials. And I think everyone here can, can relate to this, right? I mean, if anyone who's on social media, um, uh, I think we, probably everyone here has received some sort of threat to them for doing the best that we can to represent the residents and businesses and visitors for the City of Lacey. And it's, it's been a tough year and I think, you know, COVID has made it more difficult, social media, um, this hyper parsonship that we live in right now. It's a really difficult time and, um, what we're seeing across the United States and, um, through the ongoing conversations I've had this week with elected officials, um, people are just saying, I'm done. I'm, I'm, you know, I'm trying to give back to my community, but all I receive is, is threats over and over and over again for trying to do the best I can, you know, and so I just. Yep.
Quick question for you. Now, when you're on the Zoom, I'm assuming it's, these are Zoom calls, is this, is this a regional thing for?
No, this, so this was a survey.
Nationwide?
Nationwide.
Nation, nationwide, it was a survey, they ser- surveyed all the members of the, uh, you know, for the people involved nationally and say eighty-one percent. Eighty-one percent of the response said yes, they have received, um, threats of violence to them or their families, so.
And then sometimes it's little, sometimes it's lots, like gun violence.
Yeah, and so, yeah, anyway, it's, it's just really.
And include work, include work too.
Yeah, so I just, I just wanna put that out there and, and, um, and, and I just, you know, for the public that's listening. Look, I just want you guys to know that, you know, as you're elected officials, I know it's, it's been a tough year. And it's been a, you know, with COVID, everything else has been very tough. Um, but I know everyone on this council is, loves Lacey and is trying to do everything that we can to make it the best place we can for, you know, for our residents and our businesses and our community. And, um, it's real easy sometimes, you know, especially with social media, where you, where you don't have to look someone in the face, um, to, to immediately go to violence. Immediately said, this person should be dead, right? This elected official should die. I was just, I was just, uh, looking at some comments in the Olympian, um, today, and there is people saying that all the elected officials in, in Thurston County should be, should be killed. And it's just like, you know, I, I, we're better than this as a community, we're better than this as a society. And I know, um, that most elected officials are, are, are sincere and are, are doing their best. They're not doing this out of some malicious intent of anything, they're just, we're just trying to do the best we can, so. I just want the public to know that and I think it's, it's worth talking about, um, and, and worth, worth discussing. Um, and so that's, that's my two cents. Um, uh, with that, I will turn it over to the City Manager's Report.
So, Mayor. Um, hey, so the next items up on the City Manager's Report, so we have a multifamily tax exemption before council. Uh, Sarah Schelling, our Associate Planner, is gonna provide that update to you. She should be coming on any moment.
I am here, just turned my video on. Good evening, Mayor and Councils. Uh, I'm going to share my screen and do just a short presentation by do some background into the ordinance as well as the current application in the contract before you this evening.
Uh, and Sarah, I apologize, I meant to say Senior Planner.
Uh, you know, when I come in, I lose connection, so I didn't even, no idea what you're apologizing for. Can you see the presentation?
Well, it's, it's in, um, slide view rather than.
Let's see. Here we go, okay. Uh, so, good evening. So this afternoon or evening, we're, um, asking council to pass a motion authorizing the City Manager to execute contract with DM Ventures forty-four or between DM Ventures forty-four, forty-four and the city for an eight-year multifamily tax exemption, um, agreement in accordance with Lacey Municipal Code three point six four, which is the multifamily tax exemption ordinance. Um, you all have been provided with a copy of the contract. Um, and for some short background, I'll just touch a little bit on the ordinance itself. So in two thousand and fourteen, the City Council adopted ordinance fourteen fifty-two, which identified the requirements related to a multifamily tax exemption program. The program is authorized under RCW eighty-four fourteen, which allows cities and counties planning under the Growth Management Act, um, to exempt the value of new housing construction conversion or rehabilitation from the Ad Valorem property taxation. Um, the goals of the program are to encourage increased multifamily housing opportunities as well as, um, to encourage and incentivize affordable housing options in designated urban cities and centers. The program provides two pathways or two opportunities that applicants, property owners and developers can choose from. The first is a twelve-year program, which must, which requires a certain portion of units be available for affordable housing. The second option is an eight-year option, which applies to any new multifamily housing that meets certain requirements in designated target areas. Uh, so there's no income-based requirements with the eight-year exemption. The tax exemption status applies to the construction and building value for housing-specific improvements. Um, it doesn't include taxation on the land value or the non-housing improvements. The city has designated, um, in our ordinance, one target area, um, and that's the Woodland Zoning District, now Lacey Midtown. And, um, they did this in response to, City Council did this in response to, um, the Woodland District Strategic Plan that was adopted in two thousand and eleven as a way to increase housing opportunities within the Woodland Zoning District, now Lacey Midtown. Uh, to apply or to qualify for the exemption program, um, again, it must be located, the project must be located within a residential target area. The program must, or the property must include a minimum of twenty new units of multifamily housing. It has to be designed to comply with the city's comprehensive plan, building, housing and zoning codes and any other applicable regulations that are in effect. Fifty percent of the new space has to be for permanent residential housing, so it can't be, hotels wouldn't be something that would qualify for this type of, um, exemption because it's not permanent residential housing. And then at the step we are tonight, that we're looking at tonight is the contract with the city approved by council, which, which the applicant agrees to the implementation of the development. which, which the applicant agrees to the implementation of the development in terms that satisfy the city council. And then the project has to be completed within three years from the approval date of the contract by council. So we now have, the program, as I mentioned, has been in effect since two thousand and fourteen. And we now have our first developer constructing residential units in the target area. And they wish to take advantage of this program. This is the DM Ventures or MJR project that you're all probably aware of, just down the street from Lacey City Hall. They received land use approval for the Sixth Avenue Apartments. This is a project that includes four stories, a hundred and fifty-one units of multifamily, a hundred and nineteen studios, ten one-bedroom units, twenty-one two-bedroom units, as well as some ground floor commercial. It's pretty exciting, construction of the project is already underway. They took down some old buildings on Sixth Avenue and are really going to improve the right-of-way in that Sixth Avenue corridor. That project received approval, as I mentioned earlier this year. And in April, they submitted their request for, or their application for the multifamily tax exemption. And they've submitted the eight-year tax exemption request, so not with an affordable housing component. That ordinance or that application has been reviewed per the requirements of the ordinance. And per the ordinance, it's an administrative review done by staff to make sure that it complies with the, excuse me, the minimum requirements that I identified just a moment ago. The approval for the multifamily tax exemption application was issued on May thirteenth of two thousand and twenty-one. So to this point, the applicant has met the requirements of the ordinance. And we will take you to just a quick overview of the site plan. This is the building, obviously, Sixth Avenue is here. The ground floor retail will be on the corner. At this point, it sounds like it will very likely be a taproom or some other service commercial on the bottom story. And another view of what the ultimate project is intended to look like, this is the view from Sixth Avenue, looking at the, at the building. Their scheduled completion for this project is late summer of two thousand and twenty-two. So to this point, they've met the requirements of the ordinance. And now we're at the step in the process that requires the applicant to enter into the contract with the city for a conditional certificate of tax exemption. So the contract is before you this evening. And it does spell out the requirements for construction, there are some annual reporting requirements, as well as some inspection requirements that come with the contract. It is all per the RCW as well as the Lacey Municipal Code. And it, again, spells out the requirements to maintain their tax exemption status. Once the project is complete and approved, has, achieves all its inspections, the applicant then has to submit another application for final certificate of tax exemption. And they submit that application that says we've met the requirements of our contract, we're okay with continuing to file annual reports to the city. And that final certificate, once all the inspections are received, is then issued by the city and filed with the assessor and the treasurer. So this is their third out of four steps to achieve their tax exemption application. Once the final certificate is filed with the assessor, they'll begin to receive the benefits of that tax exemption the year following approval, the first full tax year following approval of the final, the issuance of the final certificate. So again, at this afternoon, we're requesting that council pass a motion to authorize the city manager to execute the attached contract. And that, with that, I'll go ahead and turn it back over to you, Mr. Mayor, for any questions. Go ahead and stop sharing my screen.
Thank you. Can I get a motion, please?
I would move that we approve the multifamily tax exemption agreement with DM Ventures forty-four, forty-four LLC.
Second.
Second.
And moving second and discussion. Councilor Greenstone.
I would just say this fits exactly the reason that we put this in place several years ago, was to get multifamily housing in that part of the city. So this is fantastic.
Any other discussion? Councilor Stedman.
Just piggyback on that, incentive to get to where you want to go, where, where there's a crisis in housing, this only will help it, not hinder it, so.
So I'm, I'm totally in support of, of this. We put this ordinance in place because we, we wanted more heads and beds, you know, overnight in our, this part of our city, which is why we, why we did it. I was on council back in two thousand and eleven and asked, you know, several questions right back then. But the only thing that always gives me a little heartburn on this is it's, it's, it's hard for me to believe that this council has the ability for other junior taxing districts not to collect an increase in property taxes, right? So it's, it's one thing if we say in the city of Lacey that, you know, we're not going to allow the increase in property tax due to this improvement. But it's also, that means that the Lacey Fire District Three doesn't get that. And then, but they're getting the extra calls that potentially be going to this property as well. And then the school district is the other one. They could be more people moving this area, going to public schools, but they don't get the increase either. So all in all, this is a strategy the city of Lacey is used to try to prop up really economic development within this region. And we really need it. We need more, you know, more people living in our Lacey Midtown to make a vibrant area for, for people in our community. And so from, from that standpoint, it's, it's really good. You know, in, in the, in the future, you know, right now, this is the only area that we currently have this. I, I wouldn't mind even looking at this, expanding this program, especially for the, the twelve-year side of things, right? Because we need more affordable housing in our community and just to give an opportunity to, to do that. But it's always, gives me a little heartburn that we're also affecting other junior taxing authority districts as well, so. But that being said, we put this in place for a reason. MJR's taking advantage of it as they should. And I think it was one of the reasons why they decided to look at multifamily in, in Lacey Midtown is because we have this in place. And so with that, I am in full support of, of it for that reason.
Is there any other discussion?
And it's been moved and second to authorize the city manager to execute this contract between DM Ventures forty-four and the city of Lacey and rolling this parcel into the eight-year multifamily tax exemption status. All in favor of that motion, signify by saying aye.
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 Is there anyone opposed? Then that motion carries. Thank you, Senior Planner.
I hope he didn't say assistant, at least. Thank you.
So I know next up on the City Manager's Report, there's a conversation that we're going to have about the Thurston County Home Fund Proposal. My recommendation is since we're going into a work session right after this meeting, that we move that to the work session so we can talk a little bit more about that. And let's get through this actual council meeting. Thumbs up from everyone. Great. And let's go to standing general committees. First up is the Community Relations and Public Affairs Committee.
And I'm not ready, of course. All right, we met on the first of November at eleven o'clock, myself and council members Cox and Uncle were there. And we had a, one agenda item. I thought I reported on this last meeting. I'm almost positive I did.
Took you to your art plan update?
Yeah, exactly, didn't I? Because it's.
I don't, I don't think so.
Yeah, because, well, this met on the first and our last council meeting was on the, that Thursday. I know I did.
I haven't talked about it at council. Ready for the agenda by then. Why don't you just run through it real quick?
Yeah.
Yeah, all right. Okay, so SNAP presented the public arts six-year plan for between two thousand and twenty-two and two thousand and twenty-seven and provided overview of possible public art funding over the next six years and identified placement of the art pieces. The two funding options were presented, the first option to use only art funds and the second option to use can, combination of art funds and the other identified funds. Funding for the public art projects are approved as part of the annual budget process. Both funding options of the plan include the following projects for two thousand and twenty-two. This banners, utility wraps, Jackson art piece and the honor wall, which I'm looking forward to that. And it's complement our Civic Park Plaza and the wonderful things we're doing there. The city established an interim stakeholder group, which identifies the following elements. It's critical to consider the future organization and management of public art programs, commencing across departmental collaboration early, considering capital costs associated with projects and considering planning cycles, which can vary. And then requiring additional, considering requiring additional staffing resources that'll be necessary, such as planning, design, solicitation, acquisition, project review, inspections and ongoing maintenance repairs, et cetera. And then connectivity with existing design standards. And that's basically it. They just went real, real brief, but there's some great things happening immediately in two thousand and twenty-two. And we can look forward to a lot of great things in the following six years.
Great, thank you. Next up is the Utilities Committee.
Thank you, Mayor. So for the first part of the agenda, we had already covered that, or Scott Egger, correction, has already covered that with our water GFC, GFC amendment. The other agenda item related to the Toney Park Estates neighborhood with the compromised septic, they did, they were surveyed failing, large on-site septic system failure. And we do have at least seventy-four percent of parcel owners who have provided petitions in favor of forming the utility local improvement district. So that is in the works. And that's pretty much my report.
Thank you. Transportation Committee.
Transportation met on November second. Council President was myself, Council Member Cox and Council Member Stedman. Staff present were Scott Spence, Scott Egger, Scott Devlin, Scott Johnston and Brandon Carter. A lot of Scots in the meeting. We, we had a presentation overview of the Transportation Maintenance Department. The department includes twenty-two full-time employees, seven seasonal employees. A summary of responsibilities in each section of the department, starting with stormwater. Forty-seven storm ponds, only a hundred and ten acres, approximately sixty-one hundred catch basins. We've got oil and water separators, sweet, sweet, street sweepers. So, you know, kind of just an overview of, of how we maintain our stormwater, our signs and markings. We kind of got an overview of that with, you know, miles of raised pavement markers, street signs, intersections, these types of things, electrical streets. We've got four hundred and three miles of roadway, two hundred and twenty-three miles of sidewalk. And a lot of that stuff needs and gets repair work regularly, as well as potholes. And then we went into our two thousand and twenty-one snow and ice plan. Most of us know, but maybe some others don't know that, you know, the snow and ice plan includes and, and, and has multiple shifts. So there's guys working overnight as well as in the daytime. So whenever there is a frost or a freeze, guys are out making sure that we have safe roads to drive on by morning. And the snow and ice plan was the last item on our agenda, so that is my report.
Great, thanks. So now we're going to Boards, Commissions and Committee Reports. And it's going to be my recommendation, given the fact that we have a long work session right after this, that we report out on our boards and commissions at our next meeting. Is that okay with this council? Can I get a thumbs up?
Second.
Then that being the case, I'm going to adjourn this meeting to a work session. Now, Scott, is it the same link? Are we just going to take a couple-minute break or, or?
Yeah, take like a two, three-minute break and then just come back to this link.
Councilor Cox?
I was going to say five-minute break?
Yeah, let's, let's, let's do five minutes as well. So it's, it's like five fifty-one, let's come back at, at ten minutes till, it's like five forty-one, let's come back at five, it's at five fif, at, oh, yeah, five fifty.
Five fifty.
Five fifty, come back.
Come back to this.
Yeah, I'm just staying here, just muting and turning my camera off.
Sounds good.
Okay, so we're coming back to this room.
Yeah, we're coming back right to this, so we're just going to adjourn to a work session. But for the public, you can get sick on or not, but until next time, you keep it classy, Lacey. And I'm going to adjourn to work session, see you at five fifty. Um, but for the public, you can get sick on or not, but until next time, you keep it classy lacy and I'm gonna adjourn to work session see if five fifty. Time to, uh, but I, you know what, I, I, this is an important conversation. I think it's an important ongoing conversation that, uh, that we need to have. For the public who's just maybe rejoin us, I, during my mayor's report, talked about a, a survey that nationally cities just. Got, uh, the results back last week and it showed that eighty-one percent of elected officials have had, um, reported that they've been, um. Had specifically threatened with violence to themselves and where their, where their family members and that is a. It's staggering statistic, eighty-one percent. Um, and so, uh, there's more information coming from that. When I, when I get the actual, um, survey and all the resorts, I have that information. I just, I'll, I'll push it out to our, our council so they can take a look at. And, uh, it's a, but I do think it's a conversation that we continue to have with our public and, and, and get to the root causes of, of why, what's, what's going on here. So. About that, uh.
Pushing civility.
Yeah, so, yeah, civility is, has been thrown out the door, it seems like. Uh, so let's, uh, open up this, uh, Lacey Council work session. There's a, uh, now we have three items on our agenda. I'd say we, uh. Let's get started with the Lacey Cares, uh, Parks Outreach. This is Jen and, uh, Jason here, ready to go.
We are here and ready to go. There's Jason. All right. Well, um, thank you, Mayor, and good evening, council members. Um, we are excited to provide a report on the Parks. Uh, community outreach project tonight and what a wonderful opportunity it has been. Um, we have Jason Robertson here with J. Row and Co. and he's gonna share some slides in just a few minutes. Um, as you know, this project started in the first quarter of the year with the overall Lacey Cares outreach. And Jason had come already to provide counsel with an update at the end of August. So some of this information will sound familiar to you. But going back just a little bit further in time, um, as a reminder, this council had asked our department. And the park board to do a deeper dive on parks, culture and recreation. To close some communication gaps that came to light during the twenty-eighth metropolitan park district proposal process. And to align with the public for future vision for parks. Um, so after the initial Lacey Cares outreach, um, Jason helped us to develop an outreach team. Of trusted advisors in the community based on their participation on, in our programs, affiliations with local clubs. Um, and or because they had shared valuable ideas through the Lacey Care Survey. Um, with the concept being that their insights and outreach to the community would help us create our future engagement, uh, plan. So in addition to nine outreach team members, we had two park board members on the team. Um, Commissioner Wheeler and our Chair Commissioner Daniels. And also Wendy Goodwin, um, who is now a park board member with the recent expansion from five to seven members. Uh, and so now she's Commissioner Goodwin. So she was on the team as well. Um, so Jason will be sharing a little more about the outreach team's efforts and also, um, the park specific survey tonight. But before handing it over to him, I just really want to thank him for his efforts. Really appreciate all the work and insights that have gone into this project. So with that, turn it over to you.
Thanks, Jen. Well, it's good to see you all again. I, um, I'm gonna take Mayor Ryder's. Kind of leadership style and go at a pretty quick clip since you have about fifty things to talk about still. Um, but as I'm moving through, if you have questions, just grab my wrist and ask. Um, I'm gonna share my screen. So, uh, as Jen mentioned, I just want to provide a little bit of context for what I'm about to share with you. We started, Lacey Cares is underway and it sort of is addressing some of the things Mayor Ryder mentioned earlier. About, you know, it's been a tough year and partisanship and we haven't, we don't know how to get back together and it's been social media, no in-person. Engagement and, um, so Lacey Cares is really an initiative to start getting people to think about. What are we gonna be like here in Lacey once all this passes and, and how can we make it better? And so in that first sort of open-ended survey, we asked people to tell us in their own words. You, you know, what does Lacey look like, feel like, um, in the future? And I briefed you all on that earlier. And so, um, what we did after that is we harvested the parks data. There's other, there's community development, economic stuff that we'll get to eventually. Uh, but we, we took all the parks, culture and recreation data and there were six thousand inputs just for that segment alone, that I'll, I'll call the focus area. And we formed the outreach team, um, because there are some pretty clear, you know, inputs that, that say what people want. And then there's some more vague things like. Uh, I want more things to do. And so we wanted the outreach team to go engage with people and sort of better define those things. And we, we used that refined data to sort of build out a priority survey. So, uh, and we, and we wanted to give people options. Here are the top things people have indicated they wanted in their own words. If we can't do them all or it takes a long time to do them all, which ones are you gonna be looking for? And, um, we, uh, also, this is the focus of the whole conversation, but we had twelve hundred people complete the survey. Um, and what we want to do now is use those results to go out and refine, um. The, the priorities that go into the comprehensive plan, the priorities that will transfer over to a future, a future action plan for Lacey Cares. Um, I also, uh, have identified some gaps where I think we need more input from certain demographic groups and service clubs and so forth. And that'll be in a memo that I'm producing right now. So for the priority survey, we did, uh, quite a bit of promotion. We had the Parks Blast and city social media, our partners shared it. Uh, the Chamber, the visitor convention bureau. And, uh, sent it to known park users as well. Police, Facebook and so forth. And so what I'm gonna do is share the next several slides are demographics. I know a lot of you are interested in, you know, who's taking the survey. So this is sort of a layout of the age group and it's a little heavy in the thirty-five to forty-four-year-old, but those are the, the parents who have kids, uh, using parks. Um, it's very light on youth, which is one of the target groups that we want to wrap back around with and we're already working on ideas for that. And it's pretty light on people seventy-five years and, and older. Um, so we gotta be more proactive to engage those audiences. Also leaning very heavy female, um, probably the ones receiving the emails, clicking the link, uh, paying attention, taking care of the family. It is, um, a little heavy on the higher household income side. So these, the households earning over a hundred thousand, really seventy-five thousand to a hundred thousand, that total combined figure of sixty-six percent. Is considerably higher than the median household income indicates in Lacey. So again, another area to infill feedback. Where we're pretty spot on is in demographics. Um, so these, um. The, the, the race breakdown is very similar, um, to Lacey. It's a percentage or two on a couple of areas. Um, ethnicity is the same, uh, Lacey's estimated to be about eleven percent, uh, Hispanic or Latino versus, uh, white, not Latino. And then this is, uh, people's situation with respect to children. See the highest number of respondents were people with no children living at home. Um, and then it kind of drops down to people of fifteen to eighteen-year-olds living at home. Um, but you know, sort of here in the middle are the kids, the active park using age kids. Ninety-three percent of them are parks users. I think that's really interesting. Um, and I don't know what the seven percent, maybe the seven percent are looking for a new feature that's not offered and they'll use the system. Uh, just to get a sense where, where people were coming from, we asked them the, the park they most frequently used. And not surprisingly, Rack is up on top with Rainier Vista. But there are some other interesting ones like Meridian Park. It's pretty high up on the list as a relatively new park in the system. But just about everything is represented. Um, we asked, uh, we asked people that, uh, to provide personal information if they wanted to. Clarify that it was voluntary and that we wouldn't use it for any other purpose and. Uh, sixty-two and a half percent share their exact or nearest Lacey or Lacey UGA residents. Um, we, unfortunately, the software we used changed, uh, um. Modules where it used to provide you the exact location, location of the survey taker. Uh, now what it does is it takes the location of the user's server, which often is in Santa Clara or Seattle. Uh, or even Olympia. And so we weren't able to discern exactly how many people from Lacey, but we got a pretty good idea by looking at. Both the most frequently used parks and then the street, uh, locations which were predominantly Lacey. Okay, so what did they say? So we asked the general priorities question. Um, you know, here's a list of things that we heard from Lacey Cares about parks and recreation. Um, tell us what you care about. And so this is sorted by number one votes, the number of number one votes. Public swimming pool, open space and natural areas, uh, and then indoor recreation facilities. And then you see, again, this is kind of high level priority. Add more sports fields, uh, is a little lower than you might expect, but again, that's probably because people recognize we have a pretty nice set of sports fields. I want more of things that we don't have. Um, and then I sorted it by top three votes and. Which is how many they got. And you can see the percentage, uh, changes a teeny bit. Public swimming pool. Natural areas still really high, but walking trails is in more, in most of the, over half of the voters' top three priorities out of six. We asked them about investment targets. Uh, you know, when we think about what we're gonna do in the future financially, what matters most, and I, I personally was surprised, but shouldn't have been that. Continue offering affordable recreation programming was a pretty clear number one vote, a favorite. Uh, so people must recognize that, uh. Well, I think they recognize the value of having affordable programs for kids, but also providing access to all, sort of an equity consideration. Adding new indoor facilities is second, followed by outdoor. And you can see at the bottom of securing additional parks, you know, we already have a lot of parks. We have some parks that aren't fully developed, so. Let's focus on some other things as top priorities first. And when you sort that by top two votes only, you know, what, what percentage of people. Chose a, a specific option with a one or two vote, um, it sort of, it stays the same. So it's pretty clear, top two priorities, but especially the affordable programming. We asked about programming itself, uh, programming for youth, teens, adults, seniors, uh. In more events and you can see that. Everybody got a lot of support. More programming for all ages is the message here, but, uh. Teens and youth are the, the top two vote getters. And the slight difference is that there are more people voting for programming for youth as their number one. Or, I mean, they're, they're using, uh, using very supportive versus somewhat, somewhat supportive. And then if you look at it. Uh, by just total number of completely supportive votes, again, it's about twelve hundred people, five hundred and eighty-four. So. So then this, it gets a little more interesting. So now we asked them about sports fields and facilities. And remember in terms of top overall goals. Sports fields, more sports fields was sort of middle of the pack. Well, when you ask about sports fields and priorities, those multi-purpose sports fields. Rate really high. They took this category by quite a bit, almost two hundred and. That, that's the, the nuance there is that. We may have a lot of outdoor soccer fields, but we don't necessarily have as many. Um, multi-purpose fills that can be used for different sports year round where you don't sink in a mud hole and that sort of thing. Um, and then a little surprise that cross-country trails came out on top of some of these other sports like pickleball. We hear a lot about pickleball, but when you, we took the vote. There are some other things that rated higher. Another way to look at it is by first, second and third place votes in blue, gold and green respectively. And so you can see, um. For example, basketball got a lot of first place votes and not too many second or third place. So the people who want basketball really want basketball. And the other, and then a smaller percentage of the rest have used a second or third place vote for it. But the passion for this category is multi-purpose fields and cross-country trails. And then we asked about outdoor features. And so a lot of categories, we gave them up to six choices. So you could. We weren't asking them to rate each one, yes, no. We said, if you could only have six out of all these, what would you pick? And so walking trails, splash pads, outdoor swimming pool, uh, natural, nature play area, uh, lake water access. Um, pretty clear favorites from this group. And again, I can show that to you by. For a second and third place votes. And this is another nuance, nuance worth paying attention to and a trend you'll see continue here, which is. Um, even though it didn't have the total highest number of votes, outdoor swimming pool had the single highest number of. um, even though it didn't have the total highest number of votes, outdoor swimming pool had the single highest number of top priority votes. Followed by splash pads. And then again, sort of like the basketball example, turf around sports fields, you know, not a ton of second and third place votes. So that means it got a lot of first-place votes and then um, so, oh, a, a pretty high number of four through six. So it's a targeted audience that we're gonna need to deal with on that. Indoor features is the runaway victory of the evening, indoor swimming pool. And I, you know, we had never asked anybody about it. It came up uh, in the organic Lacey Care survey, you know, quite a bit. And so we include it in the survey. Um, even though it's not on the current docket of things to do. Uh, and there's a lot of energy around indoor swimming pool. And even though earlier in the general priorities, more playgrounds didn't rate super high. When you ask about indoor, there is a lot of interest in indoor playgrounds. People want a place to take their kids out of the rain in the winter and the spring and the fall. And half the summer. And then again, now that you're used to looking at this graph, you see the passion around the swimming pool with the first place, second place votes. I mean, it's just not even close. And again, basketball, same people, right? We'll play outdoor, we'll play indoor, bring some hoops. And you know, the most, it, the highest numbers for top votes and then there's not even um, barely any third-place votes.
All his life.
Yep. I remember the day. Um, you know, what's, some things that surprised me, and this is, you know, one of the areas that I wanna, I wanna investigate further. You see pickleball and tennis, the rack sports are pretty far down the list. Um, and so is that the, you know, this was a self-select survey, right? People who wanted to take the survey took it versus a telephone survey where we kind of call them by uh, demographic cohort, um, which someday we, we're going to do. But they're, they don't rate as high as I would have imagined based on the noise that I heard about. What really has prepped up, um, that was sort of, this was, the ice skating rink wasn't really, it wasn't a high-level Lacey Cares input, but when we did the intercept surveys and asked people, what would you want, the ice rink all of a sudden popped up. And then even on the survey, uh, even after they voted it, voted for it, in the write-in section, they'd say, I, I vote for ice rink and also I would like an ice rink. So, and I, we, we were trying to figure out, is that, is that a Kraken thing? Is it winter is coming, something new to do? Um, so we need to kind of explore what that means. Terms of classes, uh, you know, this, the, the next couple of answers are, I just, I have to believe a lot of COVID-driven angst. You know, we wanna go out and do stuff together with people, movies in the park, concerts in the park. I'll even run if I have to, if I can just go out and do something. Um, and then, so kind of programs rated higher generally than classes, in terms of classes. Cooking, crafts and art um, are of most interest. And you can see here at the very bottom, virtual opportunities have come to an end for people. And the same thing, first, second, third place votes. The concerts just cleaned up. Nothing much to say about that one. And then in terms of arts and culture, again, these are pulled straight from the things people told us in Lacey Cares they'd like to do. We tested them and street fairs with food and entertainment. Um, the single largest vote-getter of the entire survey. Um, makes sense, uh, farmer's market. Uh, you can see the kind of, people wanna get together. I did, we, uh, we did a briefing for um, a committee on equity. I forgot, oh my gosh, what's the, the name?
Commission on Equity.
Commission, thank you, sorry. Um, so cultural events and festivals um, is, you know, something we shared with them. People wanna get together and learn about different cultures. Um, it's, d- food always helps, and so that's a, you know, an area for them to kind of build some programming around. You know, not, not as much interest on art galleries and lecture series. Just two more here. This is same, same topic, first, second, third place votes. Same two really stand out, you know, that, they grab most of the first-place votes. So in terms of what comes next, um, where, like I said, we're gonna incorporate what we learned here uh, and what we learned in the follow-up outreach in the community uh, into the comp plan. Um, I mentioned some of the gaps, I wanted to do more um, with partners to, trusted, trusted partners um, on the front lines to meet with BIPOC communities, school district, um, seniors would like to do. Uh, I think we're gonna do a presentation to the historical uh, commission and uh, you know, I'd also like to do presentations at Jubilee Panorama uh, to try to fill out that senior input and. Um, the outreach team that we've been working with, um, who've been doing the peer-to-peer engagement is gonna get a brief pause, but they have agreed uh, universally to serve as sort of peer review partners. So as we uh, as we do more engagement or we ha- have draft documents or uh, recommendations for council, we'll vet them with that group who's kind of heard the, heard from the people directly. Um, which is great redundancy for making sure we're getting it right. Eventually, whether a, a standalone survey or as part of a broader Lacey Cares uh, survey, we wanna do a telephone or telephone slash hybrid survey um, that, that is, reflects the demographic socioeconomic uh, makeup of Lacey. Um, and we understand, you know, what voters are thinking about um, in terms of uh, value proposition. Um, we wanna start talking to partners. Um, it's probably, I should have said this a lot earlier in the presentation, so the end, but you know, w- we're trying to identify what people want, not necessarily what the city of Lacey has to do by itself. And so we wanna find, find ways to leverage resources with uh, partners, which could be private sports organizations, peer cities, um, school districts, um, who, who have the same objectives. And find creative ways to get as much uh, of the priorities done as we can. You know, here at the end, uh, just wanted to point out, there's some things, one way or the other, we have to address. But the swimming pool jumped out the chart, and so we need to share what we're doing, you know? It may not be building a pool tomorrow, but it may be like, here's what we're looking at, or here's who we're talking to. Um, where there's an undercurrent of um, people feeling less safe at parks, um, attributed to homelessness, but other things, uh, behavior um, that we wanna look at internally. And then there's a crossover, not just, you know, people have a desire for parks and open space, um, partially ignited by the Greg Cuyo uh, park study, but also seeing trees come down. Um, we heard a lot about that throughout Lacey Cares in every category. And um, we've gotta keep our eye on the prize, which is that affordable, accessible recreational programming, um, which people oftentimes is the number-one reason they love to live in Lacey. So I'll stop there, and if you have a, a data question, I can pull that back up, but I'll just open the floor.
Welcome, Senator Miller.
Uh, swimming pool comes up time and time and time again. Uh, I don't, I, I know, I know there's one in Federal Way, and I know that because I was there when they built it, uh, the aquatic center there. And uh, is, is there, is there a model of success that we can, we can look at to, to again, uh, come back and try to address this issue for the public or?
Yeah. Do, do people not know that we have pre-public swimming pools in the city of Lacey? Yeah, when, when we have the direct engagement to drill down a little bit, um, that a lot of people said, I'm not comfortable going to a school pool or it's not open when I can swim. Um, or it's no fun for my kids because it doesn't have a giant slide, you know? So it's a combination of things. But in terms of, you know, what to do about it, your, your peer communities are doing an aquatic study. I kind of see what, what comes out of that. I just looked at the, the survey results and it's e- every, they, they broke it down by school district and the extremely enthusiastic answer is over ninety percent in every community. Now, did anybody ask them how much they're willing to pay? No, we're nowhere near that, that phase. But the point is that, that, and we, so when it first came up, we were talking to people during the summer and, and so a few of our committee members said, you know, it's summer, they're hot. But we just asked this in the fall and it is not warm outside. And so it, it, it's of high interest. Um, people have suggested there's a pool up in Tacoma that they suggested as a model. Um, I, I've mentioned to you before, I've been doing visioning in Hillsborough, Oregon since nineteen ninety-nine. And every year, pool is the number-one priority. And just last year, they finally got one in and they found a model that worked for them. So it's, it's a lot of effort, but it's high visibility, high reward if you can figure it out.
Very expensive. Councilor Stedman?
Uh, yeah, so there's a, you know, we had recent talk about a YMCA and Yakima just had a big indoor um, pool facility um, with their YMCA, so you know, maybe there's, you know, the chance for collaboration or partnership. But we need indoor everything, um, especially if it's gonna, or pattern's gonna be, you know, three-quarters of the year rain.
Amen, preach it.
And that's a good point. You bring up Councilmember Stedman, um, the YMCA, as, as you recall, the um, city paid for a feasibility study back in twenty-seventeen um, for the YMCA, and we have continued discussions with the YMCA. And it has been, you know, in the past year, a more hot topic than ever before. So um, so yeah, I think that it's gonna be a great opportunity in taking all of this information that we, that we got from the outreach survey and just going through part of Jason's report will be recommendations on, you know, who to um, potentially partner with. Or, you know, this would be a great thing to partner with a nonprofit such as the YMCA, that sort of thing. So we'll be going through that. Did you have something, Scott?
I did. I made a question for Jason. Because there's been so much buzz about the regional collaboration with Olympian Tumwater and about a pool, is that possible that influenced these results or what's your opinion on that?
I, I don't think so because, because pool came up organically before that study started in the Lacey Cares outreach. And the other thing I've learned over twenty-plus years is that people aren't really paying that much attention. Um, unless, you know, they, they get pulled in. And so I, I think it's real.
And um, we're good that Tango Wild Thompson Place, they have a pool as well. We have a pool and and it's in our, it's in our urban growth area, but I mean, I remember going to it as a kid a- as, as well, so. But it, it is one of those things that it's very expensive, but they're also very popular. And like, you can see, you can understand why. Um, so Jason, what, give me your biggest, what's your biggest takeaway fr- from, from all this?
You know, I think that, 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 you know, what, what we've done so far is we've got a pretty good, I, we brought into focus what people are thinking about. We're not any kind of a commitment stage. I think we're at the exploratory stage, you know, what's possible. I think that, that we, we've been given permission to think big, uh, you know? Um, don't be afraid to look at it. If, if, if you have to tell us it doesn't work that way, we can't do this one, then okay. I mean, there's, in Lacey Cares, where there's a number of people saying, be really careful with my tax dollars, so you gotta balance, right? Um, but I think, I think open space and trails, preservation of and recreation access to, I think uh, I just think back of some of the comments, when you let people answer open-ended questions, you know, some of the honesty you get, you know? And people were telling me places that have splash pads and they're like, we don't have a splash pad, a spray park? Um, so there, there's, I'm not saying that's cheap either, but I almost put it in the easy category side of the ledger. Um, it's doable, it's visible, uh, it's a step towards a pool uh, for hot days in the summer. It's not everything. Um, I think, I think what, another thing that was really um, informative was how many people said, thank you for asking me. Um, so I would continue to engage with the community, you know, e- each major step of the process. I'd share the data um, with your partners and say, hey, what do you think about this? And see if you can stumble into a great solution.
Excellent, thank you. You know, and I, I do think we have some great opportunities for some partnerships. So specifically with the um, since we just had a uh, uh, um, a uh, proclamation earlier today uh, with the Nusqualee Tribe. Um, you know, we have a full town center um, that's gonna be in our future. We have dollars that this council has been sitting on for a long time for a, a, some public improvements within that, what's, they're calling the Queenwood Village area next to Cabela's. Uh, we've also been in talks with them with a uh, indoor facility. They've been interested in learning more about that. Uh, so we, I think we might have some really great opportunities to get some of these indoor facilities with a partnership with, with a tribe, where we can get some public investment, tribe investment and really have something that our entire community can be very proud of and be a ma- major asset for, for all, you know, for, for everyone. So uh, there's, this is really encouraging actually, hearing all this, considering what we've been thinking in the back of our minds about how we can partner with a tribe with doing something in that area. So um, I think that's a, it's good, good to know. Uh, Councilor Stedman? Mike?
Yes, my takeaway from this, people value both indoor facilities, but they also want their open spaces. And with the, you know, Great Coolio Park is already a natural park. And that, that could, we could leverage that for open spaces where in the new Gateway Area, when that's developed, we leverage that to have the need for indoor uh, facilities of, that are multi-use, not single-use. And that goes with Great Coolio Park too. So it could satisfy everybody and the Great Coolio Park or open space parks relatively are cheap. So that even saves money as compared to where you're developing the indoor buildings, it's a little bit more expensive. So best of both worlds.
Okay, well, thanks. Uh, uh, go ahead, uh, Councilor Miller.
Uh, ju- I, just, I, I know we've been talking about indoor entertainment for, for a while and trying to figure out, you know, how we can make something like that happen. I know when the sun comes out, you know, our parks are full and it's, it's obvious. Uh, but in the wintertime, uh, you know, not so much. In fact, when I see a kid on a bicycle, I'm very surprised because everybody seems to kind of go in and hibernate. I don't know what they do. Uh, but I, I know they have disposable dollars to spend and they would like to do something, um, because they tell me about it. And so, you know, I know that, you know, this council is very interested in providing for the wants and needs of the community. So I'm, I'm very excited and on board for, for anything that we can do to help uh, bring some indoor um, into the community.
So, so Jen, what's the next steps in all this?
Um, so, and, and so we'll share next steps. So can I add one thing real quick?
Yes.
I know, we don't have a lot of time, but uh, I thought it would be a good opportunity to give the council a heads-up. Speaking of partnerships and things that, that could, could be something eventually, um, the Northerson Public Schools has invited the city to the table to look at use of the Nusqualee or Bucknell Field site. Um, we're fin- finally ready to do something there. They are wanting to focus on early childhood education at that site because there is such a need that, I don't have the stats in front of me, but it's staggering. Um, the kids that need to be reached o- of that age group, and they want to provide family support as well. And so they're looking at um, bringing community partners to the table to explore feasibility of a young child and family center. Um, that includes not only educational learning to serve up to five-hundred students at a time, um, but also learning through play. For exam- for example, nature play, um, there could be a potential for a, potentially a pool. Um, and, and indoor play opportunities like covered playgrounds, you know, we, I was able to share just, this is just coming in the last few weeks, but I was able to share the preliminary results of the data and say, hey, this is, this is what the community is saying that they, they need. Um, and so they're looking heavily at grant opportunities that might be available. Um, so Rick Walk and I are going to start engaging in that process. And I gave the park board a heads-up too, so I thought it'd be a good opportunity, since we're talking about this kind of stuff, to let you know that as well. And if you hear about it, um, that's what's going on, so.
Great. That's been a space that's been needed to be repurposed for quite a long time. Councilor Cox?
And following up on uh, Scott's comment.
And following up on Scott's comment, I just saw within the last week that City of Olympia is talking about a swimming pool and aquatic center. And again, I think regional conversations on these things would be a good thing.
Okay, well, thank you. Keep up the good work. I know you guys still have some more work to do and so look forward to hearing the results.
Yeah, so next steps, um, Mayor, to answer your question, um, Jason will provide a full complete report with some recommendations. And, um, obviously, we talked about partnerships quite a bit. And then a big important next step is updating the Parks Culture and Recreation Comprehensive Plan. And we can use that Parks Outreach data, um, plus more engagement that we're going to be doing for that update. We'll work on that all of next year and it's due in August of twenty twenty-three. So.
So I know I know this is a conversation Scott and I have had several times. The the other partner out here that we need to talk to is Saint Martin's University. You know, they're in need of an upgraded baseball facility. We we would love to see, you know, a fifteen hundred seat stadium of, you know, nice championship baseball facility in the City of Lacey that could also do a some sort of a, you know, league, a summer baseball league of some sort. So I think that's the other thing that we need to continue to think about is how how do we, how do we partner with Saint Martin's University and and either develop a stadium type situation there or even at the next phase of the of the rack with with our regional partners too. So it's something that needs to be continued to be propped up and talked about. It's not just because we're both baseball fans. Okay, uh, thank you, appreciate it. Um, on to our next agenda item, which is the review of the state legislative priorities.
Well, good evening, Mayor, Deputy Mayor and council members. Uh, it's really hard to believe, but the twenty twenty-two legislative session is right around the corner. And so in preparation of that commencing, uh, we have put together tonight um, a draft of the twenty twenty-two legislative priorities for you all to review uh, in anticipation, not just of that session, but also in anticipation of a joint meeting uh, that this body will have with our legislators on December sixth. Uh, with us tonight is Brian Enslo and Brian has been providing the City of Lacey Government Affairs Support for over five years. And he's been here with the region for twenty plus years. And so Brian is going to take us through a quick review of some context of the twenty twenty-two session and then also provide a very high level view of those draft priorities that I just mentioned. Uh, so with that, Brian, um, please feel free to take away.
Great, thank you for that, um, uh, nice introduction. I really very much appreciate it. Before I get rolling, just a quick either thumbs up or heads that I'm coming through clearly and I don't need to talk louder. Okay, great, well, thank you for that. I'm gonna get rolling here with my presentation. Looks like I'm having a little bit of trouble, Shannon, sharing my screen, sorry. I don't know why.
You the host?
I am the host. It's a share preference for some reason that I haven't had to select before.
Brian, if you give me just a second, I'll pull up the slideshow.
Right, I appreciate that. I'm sorry for the. Thank you very much. Um, let's go ahead and advance to the next slide. So, um, so just by, um, I'm gonna, I'm gonna start with just a little context, um, talk about some, um, some issues that have arisen recently and then go into the agenda and then provide hopefully some time for questions. Just to summarize, last year, given everything, and I am sensitive to kind of social context and and what's going on, we had a really good session. We, from what I would say, one of our our number one transportation objectives was to receive some level of funding for preliminary design on the I five corridor that was funded. We had requested seven and a half million, we got five. Um, we did receive funding for assistance for cleanup and help with the homeless encampment on the DOT right of way. Um, and of course, um, sorry, thank you. And of course, we had, um, a a fully funded heritage program, which helps us move forward with our Lacy Museum and Cultural Center. So really excited about that. Um, next slide, please. So we are, um, rapidly moving into the twenty twenty-two session. It is, um, what is known as a short session or a supplemental session. It is only sixty days. It is going to be virtual two point oh. Okay, so I actually heard at four thirty today what the House is gonna be. So the House is no longer TBD. But what the Senate announced about a week ago was hearings are going to be virtual. Senate members will be asked to be present on the Senate floor, so they will be there, but limited access to public. So they said twelve people, um, um, of the public can be at the gallery at any given time. And I don't know if that's twelve people on either side. I don't know if we're gonna have to do like lotteries if your lobbyist wants to be there, if their bill is passing or not. Um, hopefully, it it won't be something too barbaric. But, um, but the point is limited access. The House has announced that, um, only vaccinated members of the House will be welcome on the floor. It will not be the full membership and they will not be interested in having members of the public either in their staff buildings, their member offices or on the floor. So, um, more to come on that. What does that mean? I I I don't know. I will admit, I I was in my twenty years of kind of predicting what was gonna happen or not. Last year, I was wrong, quite frankly. I really thought that the virtual environment would slow the members down. It would be hard for them to kind of like work on hard issues and come to compromise. I'm not sure that assessment was wrong. I think what was, uh, um, where it where it where in terms of a result is I don't think a lot of those issues got worked out, but they did get passed. So, so, um, so hard to say whether last year was kind of a zeitgeist or a moment in time or if if it's if the legislature will still have capacity to take on a lot of issues this session. Revenue forecast continues to be, um, very, very good. The, um, the legislature left town last year around March on the February forecast. Since then, there's been a a June forecast and a September forecast and tomorrow is the November one. So June was up two billion, September was up a billion. I think tomorrow is gonna be up another billion. So so they have, on a roughly sixty billion dollar base, they have another seven and a half percent general fund state revenues to work with. And that's in addition to all the one-time federal money they got. So you're here debating a one percent property tax and actually it being a lower property tax collection. And the state is looking at an increase in general fund revenue approximately seven and a half percent. We'll see exactly when the final numbers sort out tomorrow. So they will have, if they can come to consensus on policies, resources to support that. That's the point there. Next slide, please. Okay, what am I seeing? I I was wrong last year in saying I don't think I'm gonna see a ton. So but I'm, so I'm coming back for more and I'm seeing, um, um, a focus on a transportation package. Um, I think we're, I I could argue either way, whether the federal infrastructure package helps move the needle or not. If I wanted to say it would help, I would say that there's lots of federal dollars out there that if we can provide the state match, we can get in line sooner and have access to bigger kind of the mega projects like Bridge over I five, uh, over the Columbia, the Nusqualee region, things like that. I could argue that. The other side of that argument could be with these federal resources, some of our, you know, diminishing gas tax and some of the financial pinch of what the state is looking like in its transportation plan has been ameliorated because there can be some opportunities to use those federal dollars. So that's me arguing two sides of those arguments. So I still feel somewhat pessimistic about a state revenue package this year before the twenty twenty-two election cycle. Further complicating that issue, I think, is having Senator Steve Hobbs be promoted to Secretary of State. So the Senate now has to have or now inserts a new transportation chair. So even if we think maybe that that creates an easier glide path for the governor and the governor's transportation plan and the governor's climate plan, I think it puts the Senate in a little bit in disarray and puts them a little bit behind in terms of having a package to negotiate with the House. So that's what I see on the transportation side. Um, so I'm still thinking we're in an eighteen month horizon before we see a new state revenue package. We will definitely see action on police reform. Though the word throughout the state has often been clarity about use of force and clarity in tactics. I think that there is an opportunity, not just to look for clarity on the civil side and how our law enforcement officers, um, respond to civil, but specifically what some of that language around reasonable suspicion versus probable cause and really how to operationally implement that on, uh, in a, in a situation where we are responding to potential criminal activity could be helpful and hopefully comes to fruition this session. And then I think, although maybe not at quite the same level, but definitely for cities, and we'll talk more about this as we get to our legislative agendas, I think there will be fairly big emphasis on on affordability and density. And I think as that translates to cities specifically, we will see proposals that will look to preempt kind of our zoning and our and and our and and what we have established as densities or what we have established as appropriate types of homes and neighborhoods. So, um, so I I see those as kind of the the biggest topics that are are probably on the way. Next slide, please. Um, this is topical because as many of you know, the redistricting commission was, um, supposed to provide a plan to the legislature by November fifteenth. Um, I'm gonna say some things here. I am speaking about something that is hyper partisan in as nonpartisan manner as I can. So I'm going to say some things and I'm going to allow you to come to your own conclusions. Okay, so I hope we're all okay with that. I, um, a couple of things I want to remind you just by boy of background. We created, we, uh, the legislature in Washington State used to figure this out on its own. By constitutional amendment, which was an initiative in nineteen eighty-three, we decided to establish this commission process. So we've only done it about three times before. It's ten years apart every time, so it's kind of new. So all the players are new. There's not necessarily a staff that maintains continuity, it's new. So to say, hey, they've never failed to deliver a plan on time before, sounds perhaps more meaningful than like this is the first time in four times that they haven't delivered a plan. Um, and it's the first time these people haven't done it. I am making a point of of reminding you that the four voting members who represent the are are appointed and represent the respective caucuses. So there's someone from the House Republican Caucus, the House Democratic Caucus, the House, the Senate Democratic Caucus and the Senate Republican Caucus. And the reason why I'm saying that is I'm pointing out that they work for and are beholden to the caucus in that sense, right? In a, in a, if you'll allow me this, I will say that they are, their boss was the caucus. And I'm making the distinction between the caucus and the party. And the reason why I'm making that, and we can go to the next slide, that's information's there if you want to see it, is they failed. They were supposed to have their final mass public. They have announced that they didn't do it. They've made some maps available and they initially said, we'd really like the courts to just take this and adopt it. They've publicly, maybe not publicly backed off, but their public statement that's on their website now says, consider all the input from the public that was provided to our process. This is where I'm gonna allow you to do your own conclusions. And this is the point I'm trying to emphasize is, I don't think it behooved any of those four commissioners to allow this to lapse to this court. I think people that they were beholden to, who their bosses were, probably, and this is conjecture on my part, probably weren't too hot happy. Because the court is not necessarily gonna go out of their way to protect any individual legislator or engage in horse trading that was happening here. So by sending this to the court, it puts more standing members in jeopardy and puts more standing members in flux than that would have been through this process. And that's what I want to highlight to you. And again, please respect, I'm trying to do this in just a just the facts or as much of the facts kind of way. Um, because clearly, again, there's a lot more that's right underneath of what I'm being saying. So the legislature has now been cut out of the process. Um, and the courts have till the thirtieth to to figure out. And and I think there was something to say that, and I've got a hand up and I'll just, I'll just finish my last sentence. There might have been members who knew that they weren't returning this session, who may have voted differently based on that knowledge, and now that's in flux. So if it's if it's in order, I'd be happy to take a question.
Yeah, so Brian, my question is, isn't it true though that the four member, the four voting members did vote unanimously? Although it didn't make it on time, but weren't they only like, you know, twelve minutes late or something like that? So is there a reason to believe or reason to think that the courts will just adopt that or? I mean, I know they don't have to, but.
So your first question was, is it not true? And the answer is, it is true that they did vote and it is true that that vote might have happened before the twelve o'clock deadline. And I think the question is whether they technically submitted it to the legislature before midnight and they are saying they did not and they are admitting that.
Right, no, I know that.
So so I am, so so your, so your first question, which, so yes, it is true. Does that hold sway with the courts? And perhaps maybe your other implied question is, is is there a reason or an incentive for this court to wade into this when they possibly have the, um, a pretty good excuse not to? And I think respectfully, I'm going to not speculate, again, because I believe it would not. I'm not sure exactly how to do that in a in a faithful, staffful way, but I will acknowledge that those are good questions. And I think you all individually can probably come up with some answers there. But there's not a factual or technical answer that I could provide other than acknowledge your, this is a sticky thing and 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 does the court want to wade into it or not? And do they have an opportunity to bow out? Yes, so good question and thank you for raising that issue. Next slide, please. All right, so let's talk about our legislative agenda or draft agenda. Oops, something happened there. We, um, in your packet, you will find, I I think, and maybe Assistant City Manager will not, I think there's a draft version, so you can refer to some of the details that are on that that we're probably too small to see. But, um, we're gonna continue to focus on the I five quarter. And now I said that I still feel it's a little unlikely that it's gonna happen. It's definitely gonna be unlikely to happen if people like us don't push for it. So it's very important to push. Our current, um, request in front of them is then that next step. We've done the study piece. Our next step is the two hundred million, which includes notably the intersection at exit number one oh nine and exit one oh four slash one oh five. And you can see that makes up the bulk of the request as long as, as well as taking up some of those, just things that are easier to do like ramp metering and and shoulder driving. So, um, we know it's, um, part of a much bigger request and we really encourage and hope that the state can act sooner than later and can, um, match state dollars with federal dollars. Next slide, please. Probably not hard for you to recall, but, um, in September, you adopted a housing action plan that had fourteen individual actions. That's tying into what we're talking about here. How do we work with the state to collaboratively work on creating affordable housing as opposed to being preempted, as I mentioned earlier, around zoning and and multifamily versus single family? So how do we get support on on taking our action plan, which has fourteen individual items, and getting those things funded and getting those things operationalized? Or how do we find additional programs like that eight-year? Or how do we find additional programs like that eight-year, that eight-year, I'm wanting to say MFT, multi-family tax exemptions. Thank you. Sorry for the the late hour, addling my brain slightly. But how do we find the ways to create markets, which government is very good at creating markets, to incentivize the types of housing we want to see? So that's what we're talking about here. Next slide, please. I addressed this a little bit, and so we believe that this is an important priority for our community as well, even though the legislature is going to weigh in independently. We feel strongly that there's the need for clarity around the recent amendment of use of force. How to safely operationalize the intent of the legislature, which perhaps doesn't exist right now? Not just on that civil side where there's really no instruction, but also on the criminal side. And then around the tactics legislation that was last year, we think there's opportunity to really look at what you're trying to incentivize and where perhaps we could have improved that belt, there'd been more public process. So let's really try to use less lethal tools and make sure all of those less lethal tools are available in the appropriate situations. So, next slide, please. This is perhaps similar to our item number two, but takes a more systematic approach around, we will not do anything about our unsheltered program at the local level without a statewide approach to the behavioral health system, substance abuse, mental health, supporting, case support and support around our unsheltered populations and their impact on public spaces such as DOT right away and other public parks and public areas. And we really need a systematic approach that addresses these deep root causes, not just kind of individual, not just on the housing side, but also on the behavioral health side as well. I think when we talk about this, we look to like efforts like Challenge Seattle and which is probably due for a new rebanding because it's really talking about all of our Puget Sound communities and statewide communities. How do we really provide the foundational supports needed for individuals to move out of their current crisis into stable? And we know it's a little bit of like a chicken and egg. Do they need to be stabilized first in housing or do they need housing first and then stabilized? And the answer is yes, right? It's yes. It's and. So that's what we're looking there is more leadership from the state. And oh, by the way, they're looking at $3 to $4 billion extra, so maybe there's some opportunity there. Okay. We were fortunate, as we go back to talk about our highlights from last year, that we were able to get funding $3 million in DOT's budget, which we have, our staff has done great staff work to help address what's happening at the Slater Canyon exit. That needs to be ongoing. On our agenda, we put what we think is a modest request, and we hope the state can do better, but a modest request to continue that funding on an ongoing and bigger basis. Next slide, please. Lastly, we will talk about capital items. There is, I believe, an opportunity for us to ask for some statewide assistance, whether it comes specifically out of kind of that member request bucket, which we have been successful in getting. If you recall, we got some help with our Veteran Service Hub, I believe, two years ago. Significant help, quite frankly, for the outside of that building. And I know that, I believe the reopening was just last week. This week, sorry. What day is it? What time? It is Tuesday. That's right. So, so what we are suggesting putting forward is we're asking for a partnership on an Oxford Housing. We're looking at leveraging $250,000 of the city's resources to pay for that operational support around resource navigation and other things like that. And then matching that with then state capital funds to purchase and or rehabilitate a property in the community, which would focus on helping young individuals that are working on living in a clean and sober environment and working on degree attainment and trying to get their life back on track. It's a community-based approach to addiction recovery, and it's a partnership with Homes First, our local community providers. We think it's a great idea, and we think there's opportunity there. Next slide, please. The city is working on.
A quick question, Brian. Just that 250K, is that a total over the two years or is it each year that that we were talking about?
Staff might be able to correct me if I'm wrong, but that is, my understanding is that is the initial total commitment from the city that would help get the program off and running. Oxford Houses as a model are intended to be individual-run. But I do think to get it started and have some help with that initial kind of community support and also ensuring that those individuals have a good start and good access to resources is what is envisioned. But if I have mischaracterized that, please forgive me, and I'm sure Shannon will, quick Assistant City Manager will quickly come in and correct me.
That is the correct understanding. That it would be for the duration of the two years.
Okay, thank you.
Total.
Thank you for the assist. The last piece is looking for some help on moving forward with electrification. We think this is a very great opportunity to whet up kind of appetite for climate change and moving forward to electrification of our fleet. And all that great conversation about how our individuals use our parks, and that's where we get a lot of interaction between our residents, is coming and visiting our parks. And wouldn't it be great if there was an opportunity for them to charge their EVs? It's a modest ask, and it could be easily supported out of, not just the member request bucket, but likely out of some of the other streams of revenue that have come to the state by the various federal COVID relief packages. I think that is the conclusion of my remarks. And I am happy to entertain any individual or global questions.
Mr. Mayor.
Well, I'd really like all five of these a lot. My question is kind of a process question because it's a short session. Do you think having five pretty heavy asks there may be overwhelming? Why I'm asking is TRPC limited it to two kinds of major things, broadband and I-5. But, but these are all very, very, very important. So I'm just asking you whether that seems doable.
Great question. The answer to me is yes. And part of the answer is it's a transportation ask. It's a capital budget ask, and then it's a policy agenda in which perhaps one of those items is only specific to the city of Lacey where others is part of a broader statewide agenda. And honestly, I feel like we owe it to not just our community, but also to our employees to really work on the police reform conversation. So I think it's doable. Some of it's because it's parsed, it's, as I mentioned, into different silos where it's one transportation ask, two capital budget ask, and then the policy asks. So I think that's a great question, but I'm confident that we can make progress on those issues.
Thank you. Deputy Mayor Pratt, I would also add to that, that you know, some of the priorities that are identified are, you know, multi-year requests that the city has been working on, and we have seen some successes over the years. And I'll just point to the first one as a really good example with the continued focus on the I-5 corridor. In the last session, there was funding that was provided to, you know, do one of the steps that, you know, keeps the efforts moving towards the larger improvements that are necessary. So, you know, some of these requests are multi-years. We are playing, you know, the short session, but then also looking to the future for several other items.
Yeah, I don't see how we could ever drop the I-5 thing because we've been talking about this for I don't know how many years. We just have to keep nagging them, so, but I just was wondering about that.
Yeah, and that's going to be a 20-year project anyways, and it just gets bumped every year that we don't do anything. Okay, well, any other questions? Thank you. Good to see you, Brian.
Thank you. Good to see you.
So Mayor Ryder, just really quickly, this will be coming back to the council for approval at the next regular meeting. And just as a reminder as well, that there will be the legislative meeting on December 6.
Is that in person or by Zoom? I forgot to check.
Virgil.
Virgil.
So as we're talking about our asks and our legislative priorities, it would be nice to get a report from CFM on the transportation package that was just passed, Scott. Maybe you can set that up and have them give us a quick update and see how we, as a city, can take advantage of the new transportation package.
So I believe we have an upcoming work session to go over our federal priorities. That'd be a perfect time to give that update.
Yeah, that'd be great. See if you can set that up.
Set the ninth, Shannon?
I believe it is the following meeting, Scott.
Okay. I know it's just recently passed, but I'm sure they're on top of it. It'd be really nice to take a deeper dive into that. Okay, thank you. Last agenda item, Scott?
I could see everyone is ready. So very quickly.
I'm not falling asleep.
I know. So very quickly, Thurston County requested us to provide a response to their proposal for the Thurston County Home Fund, which you know is HB 1590. We received a briefing on that and what that would do. It's essentially a 1/10th of 1% tax that would raise about 3.4, 3.5 million annually. And that could be devoted to affordable housing, services for mental health issues, I'm sorry, facilities, and also for underserved populations. So, and trying to craft a letter, here's kind of what I've heard from council so far. I don't think there's been a full endorsement of it, but I don't believe there's been a full opposition to it. I think there's been some discussion collectively in council that there's been some discussion about a regional framework and that there's money that has still not been fully committed. And is there a question about timing? Should that be fully committed before we do? It may be a full endorsement. And what's the best way to work with accounting? Again, trying to craft a letter, they're going to be holding a public hearing on November 23rd. And they've asked for input from all the jurisdictions that would be impacted by this. So I guess collectively, if we can maybe have a discussion about what message that you'd like to send to the Thurston County Board of Commissioners?
What's your recommendation?
I guess my recommendation at this point is that I think there's been a lot of good work. I'm encouraged by the regional framework that the Thurston County staff have provided to the city council. I think we probably do owe it to the public to show how we fully committed those dollars before an independent action is, before we raise a new tax. And then I think just because the nature of this is a councilmatic process, once we get that plan finalized as a region or through the county, go through another public process to show this is what we've done, and this is where the remaining gaps are. And if the issue of the 1% tax is still necessary, at least there's a basis for having that discussion again and being proposed for the county.
So the other thing, yeah, go ahead, Congressman Cox.
Just a time question, Scott. How long a period of time are you envisioning that it would take to get all of that money committed and then get to the point where you're recommending?
That's a good question. I don't know if I have a great answer for it. I mean, clearly there's been discussion about buying property in the county, and the city of Olympia is working on that. We're working with the county about a potential for a hotel purchase. That hasn't been fully committed yet. We haven't fully decided how to do the $14.06, which the Regional Housing Council is still discussing. There's new dollars from ARPA that the county receives solely. And again, it's just a kind of a question. I think once you can identify, here's where all those projects are, those funds are now fully committed, and then you do a reassessment of what is left over, where are the gaps? I think that deserves another conversation. So as soon as that program can be accomplished, meaning the plan, and as soon as those projects are at least been greenlined or approved by the respective legislative bodies, you know, I think that would be the time to re-approach that issue.
Can we get them on the agenda so that we can at least discuss them and make decisions?
Well, I think the bigger issue is it's the same, it's the same plan that Thurston County staff provided you. So at some point, it needs to be adopted. And then I think there needs to be some action or some visible action. Those projects are now in play. They're being built. They're committed. Some demonstrable way of showing to the community that there is being built.
So I just wanted to put this out to this council. Looking at this fund, if you're looking at it countywide, as they're doing right now, the majority of the dollars that the county would be receiving would be coming from the city of Lacey. Just think about that for a second, right? So the question is, is if this is going to happen, and it's going to happen at some point, who should, who do you want to be in control of those dollars? Now, I'm all for regional cooperation and we should be working regionally with our partners. But since the majority of the dollars are Lacey dollars, I feel like Lacey should be in control of those dollars and then work into an MOU with a county. That's my feeling about it. That's a green sign.
Two things. One, keep in mind that Olympia already has a home fund, so they're not part of this. Which is the reason, as you said, that we're so much, such a big percentage of the money. Because Olympia is keeping theirs still. They're not putting theirs into the county. That's one. And two, there is still no reason, even though the legislature has authorized this to be done on a councilmatic basis, there's no reason in the world this can't go before the public as taxes should do.
Understandable. So what I would say is, let's craft a letter saying we're still in this conversation. You can use absolute, where are we at right now? We would like to see the dollars that we have committed before we take the next step. And trust that the city manager and myself can craft that letter and since they need it here pretty soon. And then we'll just continue to have these conversations with this council about what's the best way forward. You know, we've committed as a council that our philosophy is we want permanent supportive housing. It's housing-first model. Get people in the housing, wrap ground services for them. And so that is our model. Let's look at the dollars that we have available, and let's get started. Let's, we purchased this hotel, let's purchase this, let's get on it. Let's start spending these dollars and let's start getting people into permanent supportive housing.
That's my argument too. We can't just keep talking about it. We need to implement it.
Absolutely. And I think implementation should be our number one priority. And then at some point, let's look at the dollars, let's spend those ARPA dollars now. And let's start doing projects. Let's start building the permanent supportive housing. We need it. And then let's also think about how we bring affordable housing, more affordable housing to our community as well. What we can do for more affordable housing. Congressman Miller?
So just, I like, like what you said, you know, we, first of all, you know, collecting these funds without, you know, public support, big issue. Collecting these funds without a vehicle to pour it into, with nowhere for it to go? What are we supposed to do? Just start collecting funds and let it, that doesn't, I'm uncomfortable with collecting funds and then just letting them sit with no purpose. We don't have a place to put it yet. And so in order, you know, we need to have a place and a plan in order to even, you know, consider this, in my opinion. And I know I've brought this up before, but I'm just, I just don't see how.
No, I think we're, I think we're all on the same page. Let's start building affordable housing. Let's use the dollars we've got now. Let's put it in, let's start doing it. If there's a gap, then we have to, you know, look at all revenue sources. But I want to start getting this thing done. We should be purchasing this hotel and moving forward. We should be looking at other projects that we can put permits for our housing in our community. I imagine at some point, we're going to run out of dollars. I get that. And then we need to build. And then we need to be able to go to the public and say, this is why we need these dollars. We're, we, this is our philosophy, this is what we need to do. It's it's always difficult to say, hey, trust us, we'll figure out how to spend it later. No, I want a plan. I want a plan. Councilmember Greenstein and Councilmember Cox.
I I agree with that. I mean, we need to be able to show the public some success. And in my opinion, only my opinion, there hasn't been any success yet. There's been nothing to show the public success in this community at this point. And until we can show some success to go to them and ask for more of their money is unconscionable, in my personal opinion.
Well, we we've seen success on a smaller level, but we haven't.
Very small, like my.
Yeah, we haven't seen, we haven't seen permanent ongoing success, which is what we need to demonstrate. Councilmember Cox.
Couple of points. We are, you know, about to enter a memorandum of understanding with the county to take the first steps in getting an appraisal on the motel. Things are starting to move in that direction. If we are able to buy a motel or more for permanent supportive housing, that ties up a lot of the money that's been coming in. A good chunk of home fund will provide wraparound services. It will also create a pot of money that we can leverage to get other monies to come in and make those dollars go farther. So I I get what you're saying about, you know, having a plan and all that. But I think we need to understand that, you know, the reason the legislature made this rare exception for a councilmatic vote is because of the emergent nature of the housing crisis, both affordable housing, the homeless crisis, and is trying to give us the tools we need to, you know, get this done. Another chunk is mental health services. Forty percent of the home fund, the allowable use of that is to provide mental health services, which would help pay for some of the very work we're doing right now. So.
So and I absolutely agree. And we need to do all of that and we need to do it as soon as we possibly can in a plan that we can tell the public, this is our plan, this is how we're spending these dollars. And it's in, and it's in place, it's moving right now. So I, we're right there. I think we're we're close. We're just not quite carried.
But I think we're sending out mixed signals here. We're saying, we need to do this now, but we don't need to do the home fund now because we have to have this big plan moving forward. And it's like, hurry up, but wait. And I think we need to get this sorted out.
It's wait for more money. It's hurry up to do something with all the money we already have, but wait for more money. I mean, it's not wait to do anything. It's just, we've got a bunch of money that hasn't been used. It it doesn't make sense to go to the and take more money when we haven't figured out how to spend what we have yet.
We should at least have that plan in place and how we're going to spend our existing dollars. I I I agree. Councilman R. Sten, you're on mute too.
I'm just going to try to push for Lacey being in control or at least, and you know, a little bit further than that, but I won't. It's just, I'm going to push for Lacey being in control.
Could you hear him?
Yeah, I, I think what Mike is saying.
I can give examples. I don't, I don't think it's fair for me to do that. But, you know, if we're putting the majority of the money, we should have at least the majority of control.
Oh, okay.
So I think we can craft, Scott, I think we can craft this letter. I think you got input from this council, how we can craft this letter. I don't think we're that far away, but I do think it's a priority of this council, Scott, that we need to get started on how we're mapping this out. Yeah, the hotel is one thing, right? And so that's fine, let's figure out what the hotel cost is, what the ongoing wraparound services are. That, those are a decent amount of rooms and that's, it's going to help. But we really need to say, okay, then then what? Right? After the hotel, then what? I I was, you know, encouraged to hear us asking from the state legislature for some more dollars for, that that's nice for another house to, in some wraparound services. Okay, that's that's great. But we really need to be thinking about where, what's the biggest thing for our buck? What what kind of projects? I'm talking like multifamily, you know, apartment style or whatever we can do. What's the next project where we can put these dollars to? And and that's where I keep coming back to, Councilmember Cox. It's like, we have a hotel, we have one idea in front of us. That's great and we should go after that and do it. But I want to see this roadmap, then then where, then what? Where's the next property that we're going to purchase that's going to have permanent supportive housing? I I want, I want to see it, you know? I want to know it exists so we can then go after it and and then put our finances together and see how we're going to make it happen. And that's where it just keeps coming back to. It's like this mythical, here, here's a bunch of dollars and it's going to somehow fix stuff when we don't even have a project for it to go to is is what gives me heartburn. Show me the project and I'll be behind it. But I want to see the project.
So can we make sure the letter defines the steps we're looking at? And so that they know that we're, we're, we, we don't, we're not saying we don't believe in the home fund, but we need to do these steps and then take, come up with plans to make sure the home fund has money if we go there. And that's an F, of course, that these funds will be used for da, 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 da. And and something more clear, because what I'm hearing from everyone is just collecting money and then figuring it out isn't good enough. We need to have a plans in place that we at least can tell our constituents, this is what that money will be used for. Can we somehow word the letter to say that? That's my argument.
I think we can. I just want to point out, it's not necessarily Lacey's plan. We're trying to provide input to Thurston County's regional framework, since they do have the lion's share of the money coming into our region to deal with these issues.
Yes.
So, but yes, I mean, yeah, we, as much as we can participate through the Regional Housing Council and identify what we think the priorities are. But you're right, I, it would be nice to have a comprehensive plan, almost like you would have a water comp plan that lists all the potential projects and then can we actually get through those projects? They do take time.
And and if that, we need the home fund for that, which I assume we do, then those will be identified as things that can be worked toward.
Well, it's at least, I'm happy to hear that the port is is reconsidering the purchase of their hotels as well. So I mean, I I I think the regions should be purchasing all the hotels that are available. That's the biggest thing for our buck right now. It's already built. So, you know, you don't have to build it using, you know, public dollars from the get-go, you just have to, you know, just do a little bit remodel. And we can make a significant impact in our community and show some real progress to to our community as well. I do think we have to show some success too. I think it's it's vital that we show success, that we can, we can use these dollars wisely and make it, make a difference. So, but I think we, Scott, I think you got the gist of where we're coming from here. And so let's give you a crack at it. I'll I'll work with you a little bit and we'll we'll craft a good response to the to the county. Sounds, sounds good, everyone?
I'd, I'd like to be copied with the letter.
Absolutely. We'll send it out to, obviously to the whole council before we send it out. Okay?
Will we be able to have a little bit of input when it'll be in draft?
When do they absolutely need it by, back by?
So there, I don't know the time, but I think they're having their public hearing on the 23rd. The last time was at three o'clock, so I would assume it'd be a similar time.
It's next, it's next Tuesday. So we'll, we'll do the best, give us a little, give, give, give us a little credit. We'll do the best we can here since they need it on Tuesday.
Okay. Because I want it to be a positive letter, but but directive.
Yeah, I think we can do that. I think, I think Scott, here's where we're at on this. And we're, I think we're pretty close to being on the same page.
Scott, you can, you can make it positive?
I will put, I'll find a positive font.
A cute headline.
Okay, thank you, everyone. We've reached the end of our work session agenda and I'm happy to call this to an end unless there's an objection. Good night, everybody.
Bye.